No, I thought it was a thumbs up. Was that a thumbs up? Thank you. I'd like to call the special meeting of the governing board for Tuesday, October 28th, to order and ask that we stand for the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll do roll call of the board members, please. Mr. Sharkey, will you start? Oh, yeah. Mike Sharkey called. Go ahead.
Matthew Patinsky.
Okay. Karen Warner calls.
Amy Carney.
And Amy Carney is here. All board members are present. Thank you. We don't do roll call for the rest of the people, okay? So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye? Aye. Aye? All right. We will begin. Dr. Menzel, will you give us the scope of this evening's presentation?
Well, if I can start with superintendent comments, three things to highlight quickly, and then we'll jump into the presentation. But first, this week, we have parent-teacher conferences, and those are really important opportunities for our staff to meet with the parents of our students, to talk about what's going really well, to identify maybe some areas for additional support, and we encourage all of our parents to participate and look forward to hearing good reports later this week. The second thing is, as you know, the federal government, at least unless something happened that I don't know about, is still shut down, and there are people who are concerned about what that means for SNAP benefits. Patty Bilbury and her team have worked to prepare communication to send out to our families to provide reassurance that that won't have any negative impact on breakfast and lunch for those who are on free and reduced lunch or those who are in our community eligibility schools. So while there may be some concerns in other fronts from a school perspective, we're still going to be feeding students breakfast and lunch under the food nutrition program. The last and exciting thing to share tonight is that just within the last hour, we received a text that the Chaparral Girls Golf won the state championship. And not only did they win it, but they won by 64 strokes and three of the students placed in the top 10. So that's pretty impressive. So that's the good news to start. So now we'll turn our attention to the purpose of tonight's meeting. And to set the stage, I think it's important to talk about the conversation we had after the three new board members joined the board, and we talked about the structure of our meetings, and there was a request specifically for study sessions that would allow us to have a deep dive conversation. So like we've done before, we're in a square to be able to have a conversation about topics of importance. Following the governing board retreat in April, on April 29th, we had a deep dive session on district enrollment trends, and so that information's available. You can watch the YouTube video. You can see the PowerPoint presentation, but that was our first deep dive study session. The second one was in August around academic achievement, and we were in this room, had a very long conversation around achievement trends over time, and had a deep and meaningful conversation. This is the third of those deep dive study sessions, really focused on the district financial situation as we think about and begin to plan for the 26, 27 school year. So historically, just to set the context, and I have to make sure I'm changing my screen. We, when we, normally, the board will see the first blush budget for 26, 27 in January. So I want to be clear for the people in the room tonight, as well as those who are listening, tonight's purpose is not to make budgetary decisions for next year. The goal of tonight's meeting is to outline the historical trends, the context that we're operating in both from an enrollment standpoint, which drives the MNO budget, from a financial perspective, so that the board itself understands what some of those cost pressures are, what the context is for the decision-making, and so that we can learn from the board what things you need to see as we begin to, as we continue to compile information and prepare options for consideration as we move into the beginning of '26, because in January, we'll still do that preliminary budget report. We'll continue to work through the IBN process. The final budget decisions don't get made until the end of January, or June, I mean. So that's part of what we expect tonight. Then we also want to make sure that there's an understanding of the revenue streams. Where does the money come from? What options do we have within that? And what steps have we already taken to address some of the cost pressures? So to start with, I want to spend a little time talking about the state policy context, because in Arizona, schools are funded primarily through average daily membership, the number of students we have, and that count is weighted based on whether or not they're elementary or high school students, weighted on whether or not they're special ed or students in poverty, a lot of different weights, and so the average daily membership looks different than your head count. Both are important, but the funding's driven by ADM. And Shannon is going to do the deep dive in the specific numbers. I'm going to provide the 30,000-foot view of the context that we're operating in. So it should come as no surprise to anyone that in Arizona, we're the 48th lowest-funded state for public education in the nation. 20 years ago, we were middle of the pack, and now we're at the bottom. That's just a reality that we're dealing with. The expansion of choice and charters has resulted in more students leaving traditional district schools. So when you have lower funding and you have more choices, that means the pool of available students to be able to fill our schools looks very different than it used to. So there was a time when kids just attended their neighborhood school, and that's how it worked. With the introduction of choice and charters, that began to shift. And then more recently, I think it was in 2022, ESAs, the universal voucher program in Arizona was approved, and those unaccountable, non-transparent ESA expenditures now total about $1 billion. The first estimate from the JLBC in terms of what that was, would cost was somewhere between 67 and 125 million. We're at $1 billion in terms of taxpayer dollars being shifted away from supporting district public schools and even charter schools, right? They're experiencing an enrollment decline similar to district schools, and in part, that's due to ESAs. The other thing in terms of the state policy context that I think is important and not everyone realizes is that there was a time in Arizona where school districts, MNO in particular, were funded on prior year counts. Every other source of our funding is a prior year count, but MNO is current-year funding. And what that means practically is that when we're building the budget, we have to estimate what our ADM will be. And some years, like last year, Shannon is spot-on. She was really good in terms of that estimate. But there's no guarantee that we can do that. The guarantee would be is if the state went back to prior year funding, because then we would know. We know what our 100th day count is. We will in January of '26. You could then build a budget based on that known number, and you would have confidence in terms of the revenue that you were going to receive, and you would have calibrated accordingly. Now districts have to estimate, and if they're on the money, things are good. If you're off a little bit, and as of right now, we appear to be a little off in the current year, then you have to talk about current-year adjustments or how you're going to cover that delta. And so there's a state policy change that would be possible that would make budgeting a little bit better for schools. The other thing in the state budget that's important is that in the way we're funded, the state is required to provide up to a 2% inflationary adjustment in the base funding level. And that's what it's called. It's an inflationary adjustment, but it's capped at 2%. We all know that in the last five years, the inflation rate has been much higher than 2%. So the increase that we get, unless the legislature finds additional money, and in one year after COVID, we did get a billion-dollar infusion, so that was the outlier in the time that I've been in the state of Arizona. Other than that, it's been 2%, even though the cost of inflation has been higher than that. So I think from a state policy perspective, those are important things to note, because we can advocate for changes, but we don't have any real authority over those. We need elected officials in Phoenix to do something about that. So, and I've been having this conversation in a lot of different rooms with a lot of different people, because I think this is a number that just really helps tell the story of where we are in Scottsdale Unified School District. And it surfaced when we had our deep dive on enrollment back in April of last year. But since 2010, the district has declined in enrollment by 6,032 students. So I was trying to identify a way to help paint a picture that would be easy to understand. So that represents 10 elementary schools of 600. Right now, in our district, of our elementary schools, we only have two that are over 600. So our elementaries, except for two, are below that 600 figure. But 6,032 students represents 10 elementary schools, or four high schools of 1,500 each. So it's a significant number of students, and in that same period of time, the only school that's not operating now that was operating in 2010 is Tonaliya Elementary. And so I think when you think about the decline in enrollment, because it was over a 15-year period of time, and incrementally, those decreases, they don't happen in one community or in one school. It's spread out over 29 facilities. It suddenly becomes a much more significant issue. However, what we know is that it's not a new conversation in the district, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. So school funding itself is complicated, and so anyone whose eyes glaze over when we start talking about the detail in our budget, that's understandable. But I want to focus on two aspects of our funding, because there are many different revenue streams. There are two that are really important from a planning perspective as we think about the next school year. The first is maintenance and operation, and the MNO budget is really what drives our economic engine. When you're thinking about staffing your schools, that ADM drives how you staff in order to meet the needs of our students. The other funding source that's important for our conversation tonight is the handful of cash accounts that the district has. And not everyone understands what those are, but we'll talk a little bit more on the next few slides in terms of the specifics. But when I got here in 2020, those cash accounts had very high balances. The board had just engaged in a conversation to say, there's a high balance in these accounts. We probably need to set minimums and maximums so that we have a target amount there. When you're sitting on a cash account with a lot of money in the fund balance, and you're looking at the requests from staff and the need from staff for help with health insurance benefits, for salary increases, and you have large fund balances, that's why I think the board put those minimum-maximum parameters in place. And so over the past five years, those cash accounts have consistently gone down, and that was primarily during COVID. We have several positions, 57, I believe, that are paid for from those cash accounts. So historically, when you look at the MNO carryforward, and these are the, this is the balance year-over-year from 2016, '17 to the projected for the current year, we started at a low amount, and then as we got into COVID, that number grew. The board regulation, DBR, talks about a minimum carryforward of 4% and a maximum of 8%. We, at a couple of points in time, have been over that maximum amount. But if you, if you look at the '25 year, that 19.6, oh, I didn't move that one on, thank you. That 19.6 million includes 5.5 million in one-time carryforward from the prior year. And so that is, is it an accounting situation, not an actual fund balance total? So if you, if you really look at where we were in '22 at 17.5, then the cash carryforward is 15.3, 14.1, and 24, and it's projected to be 9.9 in this current year, could be a little bit lower depending on how we deal with the ADM decline. So that's just, when you think about our carryforward amount, we're getting closer to the 4% floor on the carryforward, not the maximum amount recommended in the regulation. So here's the slide that shows the cash accounts, and I'll talk briefly about these, and then when we get to the detailed presentation, Shannon can answer any of the questions on that. But the MIP line item, the orange graph here, that's our Medicaid reimbursement. So those are funds that we earn through billable hours from Medicaid for special education services. And it's been inconsistent in terms of how much revenue we get every year, but you can see that the expenditures associated with that MIP account have increased pretty significantly, and now we're down to less than $1 million in that account, at least projected for this current year. The green bar, which is more of a level line here, that's our community education department, so early learning and community education, and it's always expected that that will be a self-funding enterprise. This is a cost center unto itself. 10% of their revenue is swept by Shannon to support district activities, but otherwise, for community ed to be viable, they get no subsidy from MNO. They generate the revenue on their own. The increase from '21, '22 to '22, '23 was because we got DES grant that allowed us to do some more things. We don't always have that opportunity, but when we do have the opportunity to leverage additional grant funds, we go after those. The bigger ones, the yellow line, which is indirect costs, and the blue one, which is civic center fund, those are where the bulk of the positions are, and that's where the funding, available funding, has dropped the fastest. So indirect, from federal grants, from nutrition services, from other places, we had a revenue stream. And over time, the rate that we've been able to charge for indirect has gone down. The number of grants that we can charge indirect for has gone down, and the number of positions in that line item has resulted in this significant drop. The same is true for civic center. These are facility rentals, and we pay for almost 17 people out of that rental fund. But when you've spent the money and you're not bringing in the revenue at the same pace you're spending it, the graph looks like this. And so while we have been monitoring these trends over time, they still fit within the prior board's minimum and maximum for these funds. But what we don't have the luxury of doing any longer is keeping those 57 positions, at least not all of them, in these accounts in the '26, '27 school year and beyond, because of the amount that was in the savings account is no longer there, and there's not a revenue stream to replace it. And these are the 57 positions. You can see the civic center rental is 16 and 1/2 on the far left there. The business finance services is 15 and 1/2, but all of those other ones on the bottom are from indirect costs. Human resources with 11 is the second largest. And so those are people who are integral to the operation of our district. It made sense to pay for these positions out of cash accounts, because that meant we had more MNO to be able to invest in our priorities at our sites, to be able to provide pay raises for our people, to leverage MNO for the uses that we're able to do. So, so we're going to show some of the cost-saving efforts that have been underway since 2023, and there are more since I've been here. My first year, the board had me redo cabinet contracts, and we took out benefits from cabinet contracts in the first year. We had an executive director and a director in teaching and learning department, and when both of those people left, we only replaced it with a director of teaching and learning. That's not reflected here, but those are changes that were made earlier on. So since 2023, we have reduced district office positions by 25.25 FTE, and the estimated savings of that is about 1.4 million. When we say estimated, it's because I didn't want Shannon to spend the time trying to figure out what benefit package everybody took, and so when you look at what their salary was, and you estimate, this is a conservative estimate of the savings. The change we made last year on special education, where we provided the market-based stipend and hired our own versus contracting for special education services, is showing a savings of 3.3 million in the current year. Last year in the budgeting cycle, we worked hard with our departments to reduce what they were going to be given in the budget, and so that represented a savings of about 128,000 or more. And when we eliminated the Scottsdale Online Principal position and combined it with community ed, that's an additional 150,000. So it's not all of the ways in which we've taken action to save money, but it's representative of intentional efforts to say, when we have vacancies, do we need to fill them? Are there ways we can reconfigure to save money? And those are ongoing efforts. And so tonight, we're going to continue to talk about what those opportunities for savings are, and we're also going to talk about what some of the cost pressures are. We also know that there were some decisions that were made at the board table in the last couple of years that had the reverse effect. They added cost to the budget. So two years ago, through the IBN process, we recommended a 1% pay raise. And then after some efforts by the associations to say, that's not enough, and the board's interest in doing more, that was increased to 2%. That was a 1.4 million, I should give someone this. That was a $1.4 million change in year one. Then because we had a pay increase last year of 1%, it's compounding, so it's closer to 3 million in the first two years of that change. And then last year, through the IBN process, we had a negotiated agreement to adjust the ratio of assistant principals based on enrollment in buildings. And the board at that time decided that they did not want to do that. We wanted to guarantee that any building that was open had at least two administrators, a principal and an assistant principal. So there were $400,000 of additional costs that could have been savings with different decisions. And the reason I bring that up is not to judge the decisions of the prior boards, it's to just put on the table that every decision that a governing board makes has an impact on the bottom line. And so if you add somewhere, given the historical trend of 6,000 fewer students in 15 years, and the projections that that trend is likely to continue for the next year or two, even if, even if we met the wildly important goal of increasing our capture rate by 3% by 2030, that's 600 kids. That's, that's not anywhere close to the 6,000 that we've declined. So when we get to the repurposing conversation, I think it's important to just do a little bit of a historical review. It's not a new conversation. Boards have been talking about this for a very long time. There have been times in the past where decisions have been made to close schools. Scottsdale High closed in 1983. It's a long time ago. The last merger of schools outside of the Tonaliya Elementary and Supai Middle School was in 2008, 2009, when Zuni and Aztec merged and became Redfield. So, so there have been many discussions. Even when I got here, I was handed a Granite Reef corridor study of the schools along Granite Reef corridor. So you have Navajo, Pima, Ho-Hokam, and Yavapai, and conversations about what does the demographic study tell us? What do we anticipate from a school-age population? And should we be doing something different there? But we had sufficient funds in our, in our cash accounts. Through COVID, we had supplemental funding that was provided. Every board wanted to focus on marketing and growing since I've been here. The board that hired me, the board that took over as a majority in January of 2021, no board wanted to move forward with the conversation of closing a school. However, when you think about the decline of 6,000 students in the past 15 years, I don't think this is a question of if schools need to be repurposed. It's about which ones. When you have 29 open school facilities, and many of them are significantly under capacity, you're spending money to keep buildings open, and that's money that you can't spend to invest in your staff in the form of pay increases or addressing the rising cost of health insurance. I don't like the idea of repurposing schools. I know that it has an impact on kids and staff and families anytime you have the conversation. Yet, we've had two demographic studies done since I've been here, and we've got the third one that will be coming in November, and the data's going to look very similar. Our capture rate is part of the challenge. We went from 71% to 55%. Demographics in terms of birth rate, the birth rate has declined more quickly than our decline in enrollment, and the number of choices that parents and families have have increased in that same period of time. And so if our goal is to have full and thriving schools, then we have to talk about what the footprint is and how we maximize the resources that are available in order to ensure that Scottsdale Unified School District students receive the best possible education. And so I think tonight, the hope is that as we look at our budget reality and we talk about the components of the budget, we think about the difficult decisions that will be on the horizon for the board. We know one is top of mind, and that's the repurposing conversation. And that's because we have a hearing on the 13th, we have a board meeting on November 18th, where we can have more conversations and process what we've heard, think about what some of the other options might be, and then a decision point on December 9th on one aspect of what will impact our budget. If the board decided, we're not going to repurpose those two schools. We're going to keep them open, then we have 2 million more, at least, of cost-cutting that we need to find to fill the $8 million hole that Shannon's going to talk about as we get into the conversation. And when it comes to that $8 million hole, I want to be clear that part of it, about 3.3 million or so, is tied to the loss of student enrollment. The other 5 million is in those cash accounts. And because we don't have the money in the cash accounts anymore, we have to move positions over to MNO. So the hole is bigger than just the regular decline in ADM that we've been navigating for 15 years. The hole is bigger because the funding sources that have allowed us to avoid some very difficult decisions no longer exist. And so I would encourage the board to think not only about this next year, think about the next two years, because the decisions that the board makes as we build the budget for next year, but think about the next two, are going to set the trajectory for the next decade. We anticipate that through concerted effort, we're going to continue to improve academic achievement. We know that in 2025, Scottsdale Unified School District has the top test scores in Maricopa County and the top in all of the state of any district that's serving more than 10,000 students. We don't believe that our scores are good enough, but we are the best in the valley and the best in the state with anyone who's serving a population our size. And we can do better. But we can't do better if we're spending money on under-enrolled schools that could be put into ensuring that we have full and thriving schools with the top educational programs that are possible. So our goal is to build understanding. From my perspective, I hope that we have a shared understanding when we leave. From an administrative perspective, what we want to know is what you would like to learn and know more of as you're looking at this data. What questions does it prompt for you? When we think about what the options are going forward, we want to make sure that we're exploring all the options. We don't want to take anything off the table prematurely, but we also know that any decision, when you're looking at an $8 million hole, is going to create some level of pain. And so the goal is to think about, how do we ensure a financially responsible and viable district for the next decade through responsible decision-making over the next two years? With that, I'll open it up to any preliminary questions before we have Shannon dive into the specific details.
Member Carney?
We're going to slow down a little. We're going old-school.
Okay, thank you. I just have a comment that I would like to start out with. I take some offense to the blaming of the board on some of these decisions and saying that we didn't want to have a conversation about closing schools, because that is not true. That never even came up. Obviously, we knew enrollment is a problem, but nothing was ever brought to us, hey, would you like to talk about this further? I had actually asked what was going on with the growth plan commitments that were... I had actually asked what was going on with the growth plan commitments that were in place in 2018 and never got a response. So I just think that's disingenuous to say that, since we were part of a prior board, I take offense to that because I was never asked if that was a conversation I wanted to have.
Dr. Potenski?
What I thought I heard you say is that prior boards have talked about and want to talk about school closing.
So they have, and historically they have. You can go through the record and look at the minutes. And, and when, when I got here, I mean, they, they talked about it through the demographic studies. We're looking at the numbers who are, that are there, and that's why the emphasis was on, on how do you grow? Because it was clear to me in, in the conversations with the board that they didn't want to close schools. And so the, the focus had always been, how do we grow? But those were, conversations were outgrowths of the demographic studies and looking at our enrollment trends.
Yeah, my point was, I didn't take you as implying that prior boards didn't want to raise this difficult issue. I took you as saying the opposite. And as someone who voted to keep the assistant principals, I appreciate you pointing out some of the actions that the district tried to take where the board made a different decision to really understand the total number of initiatives that have been pursued by the district's leadership to try to manage our, our budget challenges. And again, I'm someone who voted for at least one of those. I don't, I don't personally take offense from that. I guess my question is, are we going to go a little deeper into the cash account and why it's dropped so precipitously, so quickly? Where the dollars came from and why those dollars are not trending?
Yes, so Shannon will come back to that slide. We moved it up from the 30,000 view, and then she will be able to talk on that, in the detail on that slide.
Then I'll hold off on my questions. Thank you.
Member Warner?
Just for the record, when we were discussing the vice principals last spring and the budget, I repeatedly asked for the budget to be on the agenda so that we can continue discussions, and I was denied. And I think that, considering where we are today, that'd have been absolutely invaluable if we'd had those conversations last spring. Thank you.
Dr. Potenski, I still have you lit up. Is that okay? Anybody else?
All right, we're going to turn it over to Shannon. Thank you for those questions and comments. And again, even though these mics aren't working, we'll pass around the handheld, it does help when your green light's on, that allows President Lewis to, to see who's asking to speak or ask a question.
Well, thank you, Dr. Menzel, for setting the context of where we're going to go through the budget for tonight. This first one really just looks at all of our funds, and we've, I've showed similar slide before, but what this really basically shows is that there are different funding sources that we have as the district. The primary one being MNO, maintenance and operations. Some of our budgets are budgeted, meaning there's a state formula that says this is how you will generate those funds. That's the case with MNO and capital. We have cash accounts. Those are things, I know people have said, well, what's a cash account? And that's really money that we've gotten from different efforts that the district does. So cash account could be something like auxiliary, where you're charging a fee to go to the football game, or a fee for classes. Another cash account being the community schools program. Rentals, those are things that go into cash accounts. Some are more flexible, some of them have restrictions. So the ones that we've generally focused on are the ones that are a little bit more flexible and have some areas where we could use them for MNO-type operations. But there are other cash accounts that we have that are limited on how we do things. But again, our day-to-day operations, the bulk of our money is through MNO. Whoops. Keep up with the clicker. So across our, whoops. Within our MNO, the bulk of, or I'm sorry, within all of our funds, the bulk of our money is within salary and benefits. When you look at all of the expenditures, that's about 62% of all of our expenditures. When you get down to maintenance and operations, 82% of our budget of MNO goes to salary and benefits, which really means that the vast majority of our spending is really directed towards people, teachers, support staff, those types of things, which is, makes sense because our job is, is dealing with people. When we break down that down even more so, you can see that 68% of our salaries are for certified employees. That's going to be teachers, guidance counselors, psychologists, individuals that are working directly with students and in the classroom. 19% of that is for classified, so that's going to be supporting roles, supporting assistance, facilities, nutritional services, those type of things. And then 13% of that is within administration. And again, we, we narrowed that down a little bit because there's district administration and there's school-level administration. So really looking at it, the bulk of it is going into certified, just 3% for each of those two administrative categories. So heading into historical trends, this one takes a look at our ADM history. And so again, MDA, I'm sorry, ADM is how our MNO is funded. And again, that is a state set formula that looks at the ADM and then divides it out for an amount per student. ADM is based on how many days a student is with us within the first 100 days. So to give an example of how we calculate that and why it's a little bit different than enrollment, if a second grader joined us on day one and was with us through day 100, that is one ADM. Kindergarten is only funded at half-day, so same situation, kindergarten student, that would be a 0.5 ADM. But if somebody started, say, on day 10, their ADM is 0.9. So that first 100 days really makes a big difference, but it also indicates why enrollment can look a little bit different than what our ADM really is. As we're looking at this historically, you can see, I mean, we had a big dip in 2020 with COVID. We bounced back a little bit, but really, we've kind of been at a 2% decline for a number of years. When we look ahead at our MNO funding, this shows where we've been the past couple of years, and then a projection for the next couple of years. A couple of things that are assumptions we have to make when we're doing projections. So the first one assumes that our decline in average daily membership will continue at the same rate as it has in past years. Is there a question? Yep.
Partly, I'm trying to understand, so I also think it's helpful for the community to understand it. A student joins, joins us on a day 101. How many days in the school year, roughly?
180.
Okay. And they're going to be with us then for 79 more days. We're not going to get a single dollar to support that student's education, even as we're going to have, you know, some number of direct costs associated with supporting that student.
It's all within that first 100 days.
It's all within that first 100 days.
And, and that's why prior-year funding would be a better solution, because we would have been paid for the kids that we had, and we know what we're budgeting for in, in real terms. Anyone that comes after that is, we're, we're required to provide the education with no supplemental funding for that.
Yeah, and, and a student who comes in halfway through those first 100 days, who we still have to support all the remaining amount of days, we're getting a fraction of the total dollars needed to support that student. Yeah.
Great question. Thank you. So for the projections, again, we are, I'm assuming that our decline in average daily membership will stay what it's been. We did bump, I did bump that up moving forward, as this year's decline has been a little bit more than prior years. It also assumes a 2% increase to the, to the base level or amount that we get per student. Again, that's all dependent on what happens with inflation. The state has had times where they were generous and gave more than the 2%, and so that's obviously been helpful, but it is dependent on that. There is also a little bit of a fear that's happening within schools districts in that there is a provision where if you hit a certain percentage of the general budget, it can impact what, what that base level is at. So there's a concern because we are getting closer to that percentage, but we did this based off the assumption that base level would continue to be at, at 2%. The other assumption is that the carryforward would stay at 8 million. And again, that's based off the idea that, one, I think that's what we'll be for next year. We're watching that carryforward go down and down and down. But we also know that the minimum that's been set through regulation says that we need to stay at at least 4%, and 8 million is just a little bit above 4%. So we are building that assumption in. And I would point out that this is revenue. This is the, what we believe the revenue coming in will be. So obviously, if our expenditures are looking higher than that, then we'll have to adjust. But those are the assumptions that we're making in projecting out for the next couple of years with that. The next one that we're looking at here is district additional assistance for capital. And there are really two sources for that. The top source is the state allocated capital, which is based on prior-year ADM, and again, a set dollar amount per student. Using that formula, we project approximately 11.6 million with a slow decline in the next couple of years as ADM or enrollment, oops, thank you, declines. With that, you'll also see, we have done, the governing board approved transferring 4.2 million of those funds into MNO for this current year. Those went to cover salaries and other expenses, so we know that that's an amount that's got to stay as we move forward, or else we have to reduce those expenses in MNO. So keeping that in mind, we have projected that in. One of the questions that was asked, I think at the last board meeting, or one of the last board meetings, was how much can we move of that capital over to MNO? And the answer is, we can move all of our allocation. So for instance, next year, that could be roughly $11 million. And we can do that. This projection looks that, would that, how would that look? And we know right now that our carryforward into this year was 10 million, so we could, we feel like we could do that for a year. The concern becomes that if that continues out for multiple years. So if we, and I don't have it on this slide, but I went ahead and projected out, like, what would it look like if we did that for multiple years? And we would, could maybe get through '27, '28, assuming that our expenses that we currently have in place right now stay the same, but then we'd get into a situation where we would have to start reducing what our expenses are in capital. So we would have to start thinking about cutting back on what we could do with technology, curriculum. I know Dennis has a very, very real fear, because it also, his, a lot of the things that they do in maintenance and facilities run through capital. So that is one thing to think about. Once you move that over and you absorb cost in MNO with that money, then you've either got to keep that in there, or you've got to cut a cost in MNO down the road. So something to think with that. The other pot that we have for capital is the voters did approve a capital override.
Okay, sorry, sorry to stop you there in the middle, but I don't want to get too far in, okay. So help, help me understand, or help us understand. I thought that you said that the, the override could not be, like, 11, couldn't be transferred because it needed to stick to what was on the pamphlet for the voters. Can you explain now why it, we can do that?
So this up above here is the, the state allocation. So the state gives us an allocation for capital or district additional assistance. We can move that. So that allocation is about $11 million each year. We could move that allocation, and that would be fine. The one below is our override. The override, we can't move. Now, what we did differently last year, and we'll do that moving forward, is that we made sure that expenses that might have been paid out of the state allocation that qualify for the categories within the override, we moved those expenses down to the override. So we cleared out the override each year. So that frees up, that's what freed up more of the money within our state allocation. So we can move 100% of the state allocation each year, we just can't, we can't, there might be some flexibility we want to look into within the DA, I'm sorry, within the override, but we can't transfer that to MNO, just the state portion. That's okay. It's all good. Yep. Okay. And again, we talked about this a little bit earlier. In 2001, that was the last time that we opened a new school. I'm going to look at my note. It was interesting, we looked at the number, and in, when we opened up Copper Ridge, we, in 2008, 2009, which was when they merged into a K8 school, that school had 1,200 kids enrolled in it. And it's actually down to 440 this year. But that was the first, or the last school that we opened up that was a brand-new build and expanding our footprint. Then as Dr. Menzel mentioned earlier, as, in 2009, we merged Aztec and Zuni on the Zuni campus, which became Redfield. Cheyenne Traditional moved over to what was the Aztec campus, and the campus that was previously Cheyenne is now what we call Choya, and we have quite a few rentals actually through there. 2014, we did the Tonalea, the Supai merger, and then pulled that back out in 2022, making Tonalea just a middle school, 6'8" grade level, and moving the kids, the K5 kids, back to Pima, Yavapai, and Ho'okam.
It was my understanding that Yavapai was closed in 2018, maybe, or 2020, and then you reopened it?
So it was, it was co-located with Ho'okam. They still kept their separate school identification, so they tracked the kids separately, but while Ho'okam was being rebuilt, both schools were located on the Yavapai campus.
Yes, that is correct. When they, so when we were redoing Ho'okam, they put them on the Yavapai campus, and we kept their expenses and their CTD number, CTDS number, and their enrollment separated between the two.
So the board never voted to close Yavapai?
No. Yes, so the question was, did the board ever vote to close Yavapai? And the answer is no, and we technically, we never really closed it. We just put Ho'okam kids, as Ho'okam was being rebuilt, on their campus. Yeah, co-located. I'm not, we can talk more about this if you want to. This is the cash accounts. I believe there was questions on that, and I know we have some more information in the appendix, so I can either flick to that now, or we can talk about that in a little bit.
Yeah, so I knew this slide was the same here, which is why I was asking earlier. I, I would be helpful, just because it's such an important part of the story. We've been able, as I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, we've been able to offset some of the structural budget deficits that we have with this cash account, and now we can't. And so I think it's helpful for me and the community to understand what's changed in the sources of funding, and you've separated them out here. So within the ones that really were most material and drop, which would be the Civic Center one, kind of, why in the past does it seem to be able to run consistently, plus or minus, and then all of a sudden, it's dropping?
Do you want me to, there is an appendix slide that shows a lot a little bit more in detail. It is actually, hang on, I think it's in here. Are you able to click, super-click? This looks, whoops, 39. This breaks it down a little bit more into actual expenditures and revenue, but I can tell you a little bit of what happened. So within, yep, yep, the revenue. So within Civic Center, I think two things have really taken place. One, we streamlined our, our rental handbook and tried to make that a little bit more understandable, and also to be a little bit more, to work a little bit more with our partners that, you know, they have programs within our schools, they're, they're doing activities with our kids, and to make it a little bit more cost-effective for them to be there as well. So I think that impacted our revenue a little bit. The other thing we know is post-COVID, we don't have the number of activities happening on our campuses that we used to. So there used to be quite a bit more football games, or football programs and soccer programs and athletic programs. and athletic programs that are happening on all of the campuses. There's still a lot of those things that are happening, but they're not. It's taken a little bit to get, you know, it took a while with COVID, and I don't know that we've totally gotten all the way back there. Dennis, would you, I mean, I know you, a lot of those rentals run through your office. I think those are the two things that have really impacted that revenue within that. In addition, we've added expenses to it. So the first thing that we do with rental money when it comes in is we have to cover the cost of the activity that happened. So whatever facilities worker is there, we now a lot of times have security. Not a bad thing, that's a good thing, but we have security there. That adds a cost to, that we didn't always have before. So some of those costs have risen as well. We do charge for those, those activities. But there's a, there's a cost shift there with, we've put more towards, towards rentals. We also moved more people over to the rental account because it was such a high balance. And we knew that we needed to bring those balances down. So we added positions to it, and our revenue has decreased within it, within the Civic Center. Within the indirect costs, the biggest impact for us, and I think Dr. Menzel-
Can I summarize that? And I don't know, governing board member Sharkey, if your facial expression isn't interested in asking a question. So if I'm going to summarize this a little bit, I'll use the term auxiliary services, just because in higher ed, that's what we might call it, these ways that we make money. They're less profitable. We're able to charge less for them, and they cost more to deliver, things like security. And then, so that's part of it, the less profitable. Second, we're just, there's less of it. There's less activities generating the less profitable dollars. And then the third one is we made a concerted effort to write more checks, so metaphorically, write more checks out of that account. So even as it was getting less income, we also were burning it up faster. Is that a way of summarizing what you described?
And I will add, I'm going to pass the mic. One of the things that we did two years ago that also impacted our expenses is that we offered a, the last retention stipend to classified employees. We didn't have ESSR funds to do that, so that was, and that was something that was really important to them. And so that, that retention stipend also came out of that account. So there was one big check that came out a couple of years ago.
On the detail, just doing some quick math on the revenue and the expenditures, the revenue's been pretty steady, around 11 million for the last four years. And expenditures haven't been bad, so it's really more the third thing. We've just been dipping into the till too much. It seems like it's kind of negligible how much has changed in the actual revenue and expenditures. It's really more that we kept dipping into it again and again and again.
That is true. I mean, especially, like I said, we did, within rentals, a couple of years ago, we paid a COVID retention stipend to our classified employees out of there. That was a couple million dollars. Yep.
It's hard to keep track of all of the different renters, but we also lost a significant renter in Lexus Prep. During COVID, they were about a quarter of a million dollars a year revenue source, and they closed their doors. So some of these renters that we have really create some revenue for us, and then when they're gone, they're just gone.
Okay, so then the next one I would, I think that we've really utilized is indirect costs. And the biggest drive within that, or reduction in revenue within the indirect cost comes from the fact that food services or nutritional services in the past had been able to contribute 25% of their revenue towards us from their federal reimbursements. That was well over a million dollars. The law changed in what they could contribute to us, and it reduced it down to 18%. Now, 25 to 18 doesn't seem like a whole lot, but it really equates to a good $300,000 or $400,000 a year. Again, that's not a ton, but when you're talking about, you know, positions out of there and having to reduce what's in there, we have taken a hit within what they can contribute. They'd be willing and are able to contribute more than that, but we are capped at 18% for what they can contribute within their indirect costs. The same is true with grants. As those grants go down, we are limited by what we can take. And each year, our indirect rate changes depending on a formula with ADE on the revenues that you have in and your expenses that you've done. So their indirect rate fluctuate from year to year. It's not a huge fluctuation, but between the, that kind of fluctuation, the reduction in what we can do from food services and what they can contribute, and then we just know that federal grants are going down in revenue. And again, we have pushed an awful lot into indirect costs, and you see that when the bulk of the positions. This is not something that's happened in the last three, four years. I mean, this has gone on for a number of years where positions were funded through those accounts. There was lengthy discussions, I remember when Jeff Gad was here, talking about the balances that were in those accounts and the need to get them down. And so that's when the district started pushing positions into indirect costs. So same type thing of revenue down, expenses up.
What's the decision process on that? At ASU, we have things where like, oh, we've got a three-year grant to do this thing. And somebody will hire a full-time employee, and then three years later, there's no funding for him. And it's like, well, we made this bet three years ago, and they're still here. So when we make these decisions to move a position to be paid out of the cash, is there, is it a kick the can down the road, like we'll figure it out later? Or is it, because we're basically making a bet, and we say, let's pay it out of cash, knowing that that's not a perpetual fund source?
It's, it's a good question, and it depends, right? So we have terminated contracts for a number of grants, like you're talking about. So when we know it's done, we structure the contract. That doesn't mean it's still not a surprise when it, when it comes, but we have that. When it comes to indirect, there is a, you pointed it out, the revenue stream is somewhat consistent in all of the cash accounts, but indirect took that hit from food service. So we've been paying for positions, which actually makes sense. If you think HR and finance, those are behind-the-scenes necessary functions that benefit every department, and that's why indirect is charged. So I would always anticipate there's a handful of positions that are in those. We maximized what was there during the past few years in order to ensure that we could protect MNO. So I think part of it with the grants, we do just like you're talking about. In the other, we knew that some positions would always be there. Shannon has, for a few years, said, Scott, we're going to need to move some of these cash account positions back into MNO. And I kept looking at the minimum and maximum and saying, yes, I agree, but we don't have to do it yet because we are still so far over the maximum amount that we can protect MNO for another year. So now we're at the point where we have to have very different conversations because those numbers have dropped to the point where we can't, you know, say there's another year to spend the money.
The Quasimire lawsuit, did that impact us anyway? Because that was a chunk of cash.
That did not impact us in any way. The Quasimire lawsuit impacted the cash that we have in our MNO account. Again, that's a budgeted fund, so it doesn't impact the fact that we didn't have to cut our budget to be able to pay that back. It means that the cash that we have in, in the bank for MNO is less than what our budgeted allowance is. It really doesn't. The question had to do with, where would you see, the Quasimire lawsuit? And how would you see that deficit? Where you would see that is on the AFR. When you look at the AFR summary page, you'll see fund balance, and you'll see what the expenditures are. And if you subtract out the fund balance and the expenditures, you'll see that there's a 5 million, I think it was a little over $5 million deficit in what we had on that MNO. So it really stands out on the AFR. In fact, our finance director said, Shannon, this is wrong, this is wrong, you can't have it, you can't have it. And I said, we know what this is. It's Quasimire.
So when we get to the discussion of costs that we have to cut, obviously, another thing we'd like to do is generate more revenue to not have to cut the costs. So where in the district leadership is the person responsible for owning this number and kind of growing it? So who in the district wakes up every day? I know we're not like an event renting space, like we're a school district, but to the extent we make a lot of revenue from activities, who wakes up every day thinking, how do we get more community organizations to use our space? More sporting activities, you know, all the things that can help generate more revenues in this area? I wouldn't say it's a singular person. I think that you have a couple of different avenues. So community education, athletics, and facilities. And facilities is the point person on all of this. So from a facility rental perspective, there's a process for people to make the request. There's a cost that's identified at the beginning, and Dennis can probably walk through the process. But I would say, he, his department is the one that serves point on this. But from a community education perspective, they're always looking at, what are the offerings? And we can generate some revenue there, but most of that stays in their community ed budget. So Dennis, I don't know if you want to talk about it? I'm talking more about the, it was the Civic Center, I think, is where we were mostly. And so does someone sit down with Dennis and say, you know, we need to generate X amount this year, and right now, we're tracking to less than X. What can we do? Can there be more marketing activities? You know, has someone dropped us, and how do we get them back? Like, I'm sure Dennis has a full-time job just running all the facilities, thinking about growing that revenue. But maybe I'm wrong.
Our facilities run 14 hours a day, seven days a week. There, there's, there are some opportunities, but very few. Our athletics throughout our high schools are in the gyms all the time. We, three years ago, four years ago, lacrosse became a deal. They were a club within the schools, but not an AIA-sanctioned activity. So we made a deal with them that will treat you like our school's athletes, and so they became a revenue source that just flittered away. They now became part of our school. And then finding the field space and the time for them is very, very- One person in my department that manages every single event that comes in to the school district. And then that trickles down into security. And so it is not something that is a department, if you will, looking to do more. We are, we are doing everything we can with the people that we have. And our schools, I can bring up a calendar right now, and you'll see activity in pretty much every school.
So I would say I'm confused by the statement that since COVID, we have less activity. And the statement that we're kind of brimming, I kind of got in your answer a little bit, that maybe activities that used to generate revenue are now gratis. And that's, I think, your lacrosse example. But I would say there's a little bit of a disconnect in exactly what's driving the revenues.
What is the lacrosse season? When does that start, and when does it end?
Well, it used to be a little bit more specific, and now it is spread to a larger part of the season. They start in the fall and then go to the very early part of the spring.
Okay, since we're on the topic, this is something I'm very interested in as well. And I had asked about the rental revenue for Pima and Echo Canyon, and we received that as a board. And I'm just wondering, do the schools keep the revenue that's coming into them specifically? Or is it going to a general fund?
What we do with all of the rental money is it all goes into a general account that we first pay all of the expenses throughout the year. At the end of the year, once we've balanced all the books, what we do is look and see what is the difference, you know, take the revenue minus the expenses, and we allocate that out to the school. So there's a dollar amount that we'll allocate out to the schools based on their ADM, or I'm sorry, enrollment. The past couple of years, the revenue has, or the expenses have exceeded the revenue, but we've still tried to allocate out at least a portion of that to the schools, so they get some of that money. That's something I think we have to evaluate what we do moving forward, if we still do that. But I know it's a source that the schools like, it's additional money that the schools utilize as well outside of their MNOs. So they do get a portion of it, but it really goes into a general fund or a general pot. And at the end of the year, we take revenue minus expenses and allocate out based off of that. I think, I think what Dennis was saying, and what I was also trying to say is that our schools are used a lot, but it's a lot of ourselves using those campuses, not outside groups as much. It's a lot of our own selves internally, using a lot of our facilities. I think one area that could be a good source of revenue or help with some of this is the 68th Street facility that we now have. But we also know you can't have people on grass, you know, all the time. That grass has got to have time to rejuvenate again, get watered and do some things. But I think that is something that could. It's not going to, it's not going to change this necessarily, but I think it is an additional source where we can generate some revenue. Dennis is looking at me a little.
I didn't want to take us too far down in one particular, but as we think about expense reductions, we also want to think about revenue generators and not just look at one side of the equation. And that's part of, and we sent this to the board, the rubric that we have for facility reuse. And when you think about like the Choya campus, for example, and we put the Boys and Girls Club project at Tonalea through that to say, you know, are these, are they, are they filling an educational need? Are they generating revenue? Are they doing these other things? And so we've got a process by which we can evaluate any potential use of a facility that's repurposed from being a school to something else in the community that can help generate revenue and offset the pressure on the MNO budget.
And our, our facility rentals piece is complex. We have a relationship, a longstanding relationship with the city of Scottsdale, where we have an intergovernmental agreement with our facilities, with our gyms, with a lot of locations. And with that IGA, we get design review services, permitting, different things at no cost. In return, they get to use our gyms, they get to use our turf areas. So there's a give and take within those IGAs. And so it's not that every location can become a cash cow because it's being, like, if you go outside right now, the turf area for the Mojave Fields is lit. It's paid for by the city of Scottsdale, and they have all their city activities on that field. We don't, we take care of it, but they use it. So there's a lot to it. It's not just simply, hey, we have space, let's rent it out.
Thank you. I wonder, Dennis, if you could update the facility rental spreadsheet you gave the board, prior board, like a year ago or so? Maybe that would be good for the new board members to see. If we could get an updated of that report, that'd be great.
And how easy is it to rent a facility? Is it a simple process so that anyone can easily get in touch with who they need to get in touch with and get their paperwork done? And is that something that's a simple process for community members? Or is it something that's cumbersome and they end up going somewhere else? And the second part is, have you guys been able to capture, like Arcadia Little League and things like that in those, particularly the school Echo Canyon that we're, that's up for discussion today?
Boy, we're going down a rabbit hole on this one. Arcadia Little League has had a long-term agreement that they do services, and in return, they get to use the facilities. Most recently, Arcadia Little League invested $47,000 into Inglesides Two Fields in lieu of rent. So we're not, we don't get to see that, but we get to see the improvements on the field. What was the first part of your question? I can absolutely- So the most challenging part about our facility rental process is, one, they have to have a certificate of insurance to be able to use our facilities. Obviously, we need to protect our liabilities. So certificate of insurance is probably the biggest hurdle. And then, secondly, many users do not want to have to pay for a facilities person and/or security to be on the site during their event. Those are the two biggest- Those are the two biggest challenges.
All right. Let's go back up here. Okay. So, as we
So, to wrap up Dr. Podolski's point, so, in wanting to be able to have more groups and individuals be able to rent our facilities, is the price of hiring one of our facilities' individuals or security so large that it becomes cumbersome on them, or is it something that is fairly manageable? And I'd imagine that most people that are, have a group already have their certificate of insurance. And so, I would, I'd be curious to look at the process, to see how simple that is. And when we want to bring more people into rent, I'd want to ensure that we have a good, simple process for them.
I can certainly put something together to show the board the process.
All right. So, moving into the projected budget, I wanted to start out with looking at the current year first, because I think it kind of sets the tone for where we're moving in the future. So, as we look at that, as Dr. Menzel mentioned, our ADM is currently trending below what we budgeted for this year, because we are funded on current year ADM. That can fluctuate between now and the 100th day. So, we're going to continue to monitor that closely. But as of about a month ago, we were, we were down about two, this weighted count was down about 297 more than what we had projected. Our budget carryforward came in also a little bit lower than anticipated. We were shooting for just over $10 million. And as you can see, it was about, I don't have the number on there, but it was just 157,000 less, so in the $9 million range. We did, the state had some one-time funding. It's happened two years in a row, so we'll take it. I don't know that we'll have it in the future, but that helped out, offset some of that decline. But we are looking at, right now, about an $861,000 reduction that we'll need to make in the current year budget. I want to be clear that that doesn't mean that we're going to suddenly go into, like, mid-year reduction, budget cuts or whatnot. We're going to keep monitoring that. But it does mean, and we've told our schools this, and we've told our departments this, that we just need to be careful about how we spend our dollars. I think that's true any year. These are taxpayer dollars. We always need to be careful about it. But what we've said is, you really need to look at, is this a need, or is this a want? And start to look at those things. Additionally, and we've done this for over a year now, is any time a position becomes vacant in the district, that position comes back to cabinet, we review it as a team, and we decide, is this something that we really do need to get filled, it's vital? Or is this something that we can put a hold on, and recoup some savings there? So, we will continue to do that, and look at those funds. And, you know, at the end of the day, we do have some budget carryforward, so worst-case scenario, there's that, or we might have to move some capital, a little bit more capital over to cover that. But we'll keep monitoring it, and watching what we're spending to address that for this year. Looking ahead for '26, '27, as kind of been mentioned, we are anticipating enrollment trends to continue like they have. That being the case, we are projecting a reduction of 583 in the weighted student count. That weighted student count is the ADM times, like, 1.23% or a little bit more, depending on what grade level you're in. Again, assuming a 2% increase to the per-student funding amount, or base level amount. And so, that does give us a reduction in our revenue for next year. We also anticipate bringing down the budget carryforward another $1.9 million. That's, follows the trend that we've been seeing the last couple of years. I'm not counting on the $849,000 in one-time funds that we receive from the state. And so, with that, that puts us at a reduction of about $3.4 million to the budget. As Dr. Menzel mentioned earlier, there are 57 positions that are funded through rental and indirect costs that will need to move back into MNO, as well as some other expenses that we've moved to other cash accounts that can no longer continue to do that. So, that is looking at 3.9 to 4.5 million impact. And then, the last one is, the Self-Insurance Trust has had a very healthy balance. Self-Insurance Trust covers our medical insurance. It also covers our property casualty and workers' compensation. It has had a very, very healthy balance. We've been bringing that down. We have not fully been funding from MNO or property casualty, because that account was so well-established. In fact, there was a year that we didn't contribute at all to it, and brought that down. That being the case, we are at a point where, again, we need to, we need to fully fund that property casualty insurance premium out of our MNO. We can kind of tier it a little bit, and just do, you know, about $500,000. But if we were to fully cover it, it would be about $1 million more for that. I did have somebody suggest to me that we might want to look at, are there some places within our coverage to see if there's some savings we could realize there? So, that is something we'll take a look at, to see, you know, is there something we're covering or doing within that, that can lower the cost? But, again, we'll need to make sure that we fully fund that, that premium. So, when we combine all of that, that brings us to our budget gap of about 7.8 to 9 point, to about $9 million for next year. Did you have a corner, Ms. Warner? Okay. All right. I was, had the privilege of going to ASBO International, or Association of Business Administrators, last week. And every, almost every class there was about rightsizing school districts, dealing with inclining enrollment, and evaluating your return on investment. And this was actually a slide that was in one of those presentations, but I thought it was really fitting within kind of what we're looking at in the decisions we're at right now, where it talks about operating costs, robust programs, and small enrollment. And really, we've hit a point where we've got to prioritize those things, because our resources are getting limited. But I thought that really kind of demonstrated where we're at exactly. So, again, we have the program cost considerations. I want to emphasize again that these are considerations. These are not recommendations. We're not trying to say this is what we have to do, or we need to do, or we should do. It's really just to show, this is where we spend our dollars, and the programs that we offer, and what they cost. And so, it's really just to be transparent on those items.
Before we go into them, I think this is an important question to ask Dr. Menzel. These are considerations. They're not recommendations. We haven't decided to do them. And yet, to the community, we've scheduled a hearing to close two schools. And there's already been some conversations at those schools about a recommendation that I don't think you've actually formally yet made to the board. So, can you kind of reconcile, what is it about the, as we think through these considerations and understand them? And I don't think I'm going to be crossing the line, but you'll tell me if I am. So, yeah, can you explain to the community, and to me, quite honestly, what is it about the process of giving the board the option to consider closing a school that sort of, in a weird way, creates an order of operations in which it almost appears to be having been decided? Like, I genuinely don't understand that, and I know that's a question that I get a lot from the community.
If I could just set the stage. So, the statute that requires a public hearing before a school district considers closing or repurposing a school was enacted probably 15, 18 years ago. So, before that, there wasn't, wasn't any requirement. And then, the legislature set up a specific requirement, and it's in the portion of the Title 15 that is a must, not a may. So, the boards are required to do this. And the purpose of it is to allow for the board, it says, it has a three-part analysis. Number one, the governing board has to set the hearing. Number two, the hearing has to be held with specific notice given. And number three, the board's decision cannot come until after the public hearing. So, the legislative intent was to require governing boards to hear from the public before they start their deliberations on whether to close or not to close. It is not a foregone conclusion that this board, or any other, will make the decision to repurpose. In my experience, I've had multiple school districts stop that moving train along the path at any time. And that's within the purview of this board. But before this board can even start to really have the conversation about repurposing, there needs to be that public comment, because of the legislative statute.
So, is it as simplistic as saying, everything else on this list, we can talk about and decide yay or nay, with the exception of that, with complete discretion, with the exception of that first one? The only way you can talk about that first one is by going through this required process that you're describing, which then creates the odd order of operations in which you're having a hearing about doing something you haven't yet decided to do. But you can't consider whether you're going to decide to do something until you schedule the hearing to help you decide whether you're going to do what you're going to do. And if that makes sense to anyone, they should be in politics, but it doesn't make sense to me.
It is correct. And I just want to add a little bit more context to the conversations that have happened in Scottsdale. So, in 2018, 2019, Dr. Krikard launched the Grow or Consolidate Conversations, identifying schools that were under-enrolled, setting growth targets for those schools. Dr. Sakos was here at the time. There were presentations to the governing board at the time. Many of the schools made progress the year after the Grow or Consolidate targets were set. And then, COVID hit. And when COVID hit, everything pivoted. And so, we had a dramatic decline, like everybody else did, you know, maybe twice what we normally had in that first year of COVID. And it didn't make any sense to have a Grow or Consolidate conversation when we were coming out of the pandemic, trying to figure out, okay, what can we do to support all of our schools in getting back enrollment that they lost as a result of the pandemic? So, we restarted the Grow or Consolidate conversation last fall. But the other thing about this that's tricky is that the moment you say the consolidation word, families begin to look for other options. So, we don't lead with consolidation as the option for schools. We talk about, what are the things that we're putting in place in order to help our schools get to a threshold, where we don't have a conversation about whether or not they should be open or not? Because we've reached a tipping point that says, okay, with 400, or 450, or 500, whatever the number is, this is a number where they're viable as a standalone school, and don't need to be on that list. We always are concerned about enrollment, but there's a threshold. So, in '24, we drew a line at 400. Said, if you're below 400, you're in our most urgent tier. And so, we had individual meetings with the leaders of those schools, had conversations, built plans, talked about marketing, to address those schools. Then you had that next tier that said, you know, you're not over the threshold. You're before, between 400 and 450. From an elementary perspective, you really want to get to 450 and up, just to be comfortable. So, we started those conversations. But if we had started with going public with a list of all the under-enrolled schools, which people see, but if you now say you're on a Grow or Consolidate list, and perhaps you're not going to be there any longer, you'll see what happens, like, happened this fall. When that conversation became public, we had families, I don't know, Dr. Bono, I think 17 was the number I saw, between Echo Canyon and Pima, where parents have already moved. The vast majority moved them to other SUSD schools. But they wanted to get ahead of any decision the board might make, because we were talking about consolidation. So, we don't lead with that, because we don't want to have the unintended consequence of driving families away. And when we put out the list of schools that are under-enrolled, that are around or at 400, so, the two that are on the list for Phase 1 are below 300, the next tier is at or below 400, when we put those schools on the list, those principals have been getting calls from their families, is it, is our school in jeopardy of closing? Should I be planning for other options for my kids? So, the staging is awkward, to your point. But when we were starting the conversation internally, Jennifer made it very clear, Scott, the law says this is the sequence of events that have to transpire if you're going to go down the road toward considering closing schools. Now, we use the language of repurposing, because I don't believe it's ever advisable for us to sell a school property that was a school building. One, there's not new property to acquire. And two, if you lease versus sell, you have more flexibility with the revenue. If you sell, that goes into plant fund and can't be used to pay your people. So, there's a whole lot behind the, the thinking that's gone behind a deliberate strategy of Phase 1 and Phase 2. The Phase 2 doesn't presuppose anything. There's never been a conversation with the cabinet about closing the six schools on the Phase 2 list. The conversation is about rightsizing our footprint based on historical enrollment declines, and how do we ensure full and thriving schools? Those schools hit a tipping point, just like the two schools that are on the list this year did. And despite all of the good efforts, when you look at the demographics, and you look at the geography of Echo Canyon, no matter what we've done, that trajectory hasn't turned. And so, it's not that you can't consider, well, are there other or better options? We chose to hang our hat on the actual enrollment numbers that drive revenue, and the historical trends over time, and the demographic data that said there's really, you know, not an argument to make that if you give it one more year, you're going to turn this around. In fact, we had set a growth target for both of the schools that we're talking about in Phase 1 of 350 for this year, and both fell below 300. They were above 300 last year, they're below 300 this year. So, even with the growth target, the trends are such that it makes it difficult. So, when you think about ensuring that we're a financially viable district into the future, and that we're able to offer the most competitive academic programming, it means that we have to consider some very difficult, painful choices about the number of buildings that we can continue to keep open. And so, that's why that is on the table for consideration. And if the board doesn't consider it, that means we have to look at something else, because the economic reality hasn't changed. We still have an $8 million hole to fill. And that's before we talk about pay increases for employees, the impact of health insurance increases, and as you can see, some of the other costs that need to be covered by MNO.
So, to your point again, Dr. Podolski. What has been concerning is that on September 29th, you had a conversation with a cafeteria full of parents, talking about an $8 million shortfall that the board had not been notified of, and that you also told them to go apply for other schools for open enrollment, which we had also not been notified of. And in my time on the board, we have never had a conversation about the health of any of our schools, which we could do outside of the procedure of going to, voting on to closing or repurposing a school. So, there are many other ways that this could have happened, and the board could have been, you know, notified in a better manner than from parents, being upset that their school is possibly going to be taken away. So, it's just, it's very disappointing the way that this has gone. It's disappointing to the community and to the board as well. I think this could have been handled in a much better manner.
I just want to encourage you. I don't know if you were able to look at the Let's Talk responses that we received. I think you'll be interested, if you have not read those. I suggest that you do, and you will see that there were responses going out from administrators to community members confirming that they were looking at a special Level D, Level D Special Education Program at Pima. That's how I learned that they were looking at doing an Early Learning Center at Echo Canyon. So, things were going out to people. And if you have not read those, you need to read them, so you have the information. I think it's, and you look at the dates.
So, thank you. I have read them. And I wanted to, the spirit of my question was not to start going into the merit of this particular choice. It was just to try to genuinely understand, but also help the community understand what feels like an odd order of operations, where we're having a meeting now to discuss a budget shortfall. In fairness, you send us weekly updates, and I read those weekly updates. And so, nothing that you did was a surprise to me, because it was all generally communicated in the weekly updates. And in our enrollment study session, we began, we also talked about it. So, as one board member, I feel like you've communicated very clearly to the board about this entire enterprise. The piece that I've never understood is why we need to start the process that to a community member looks like a process to close schools, before we, as a board, have adjudicated these different options to meet the budget shortfall, only one of which, albeit the largest, or with one exception, you know, is closing a school. And I think the answer is that, again, in this odd logic, you can't consider an option until you put in until you put in place a process, which then means you're signaling a direction, even though your intent is only to give yourself the option, if I'm simplifying it.
It's fair, and there are other approaches. Other school districts have created committees that make a recommendation. You saw that in Kyrene, the committee came forward with a recommendation to close nine schools. I think that got pared back to seven. They're having the community conversations, everyone is mobilizing to say, you can't close my school. These are predictable whenever you're looking at closing a school. It doesn't matter the district, it's going to be the same kind of response. What we try to do is be thoughtful in a repurposing conversation to say, and we talked about this at the board retreat and at the enrollment study, and that is, when Paradise Valley closed their schools, they made a decision in February or March, and parents had a very short period of time to pivot. And the question was asked, and my answer was, that if we're going to repurpose schools for '26, '27, the board needs to make a decision by December. So at that meeting, that was my response to the question, and we built a backward timeline to ensure that we could have a recommendation and a decision point that met the December timeline so that our families had ample time to adjust to the change, that our staff would be treated fairly, that we could plan for next steps. And part of why that's important is, while we've given examples of what repurposing could look like, those are not decisions, nor are they final recommendations. I felt it was incumbent on us to demonstrate what that could look like, to take the pressure off of the MNO budget, if the board was going to make the difficult decision to repurpose schools. So those are examples that we know are viable, but they're not the only examples. And so when I met with the Echo Canyon families, I said, if the board decides to move in this direction, we'll invite you to share what your ideas are with respect to repurposing. We've got the rubric that will guide a recommendation for final action by the board. The first step in that is the board deciding to actually close the schools so that repurposing is necessary. If the board doesn't do that, there's not enough time in our schedule to run through all of the potential scenarios of how they could be repurposed. We needed to show that there was a viable path forward in the instance of the schools that are under-enrolled. And that's why there's still time for the conversations, the hearing that's really important on the 13th, the meeting on November 18th, where we can talk about ideas that people have already surfaced. We've had agenda requests that I've committed to put on that agenda. The decision point's not till December 9th. And so while it's strange in the order of how it may have been introduced to the community, it wasn't a new concept to the building leaders or the staff, because I had those conversations with the building leaders and staff a year ago, as did my team. We didn't socialize it with parents in the same way, because what you don't want is to create a mass exodus that creates a self-fulfilling prophecy. So it's the combination of all those things. Yes, the order of operation seems a little strange, but we're still in a point where the purpose of tonight's meeting is to say, here's the whole pie. Here's what we have, difficult decisions have to get made, and if we don't do this, we have to do something else. Which difficult decision is it that the board will prioritize?
Can you just talk, I interrupted you on bullet one.
That's okay. Well, I wasn't necessarily going to go through every single bullet and item, but we can.
I mean, can you talk a little bit about how you got this, is this the menu that you think the board should be working from as we think about different ways?
No, this was really a, how do we spend our dollars? If we're going to look at the fact that, you know, we only have so many dollars, this was really a look into, and I know the board memo had a little bit more even within departments. It's really, I think, to understand how to cut the budget, we have to know how the budget is fully utilized and how we are using that. So for, so at looking at these, whoops, I just jumped ahead on my screen. And looking at these, you know, we took a look at what are the different programs that we have that are out there, especially ones that are optional programs. I'm not saying I would at all advise eliminating IB. That's a program that brings students in. A lot of the things that we do are programs that bring enrollment in. But it was to show that the things that we do offer, the programs, the robust programs that we offer, all have a cost associated with it. So this was looking at, like, for instance, IB, what does it cost to have that program? We are able to identify those things, we tag those items with a special account code so we can look at it and say, what are the costs associated with that program at Desert Mountain High School? The same thing, so that total is looking at what it is for Desert Mountain High School. We also have the middle years program primarily at Mountainside, but it also feeds into Desert Mountain High School and the, I always want to call it early years, primary year program, which is at Anasazi. The combined total for the International Baccalaureate Program from the primary year up through high school has a cost of $364,000, almost $365,000. Same thing with Avid. We're able to pull that out because of how we tag that in our account code to show this is what we spend within the Avid program. We have a math and science academy that's at, started at Saworo, so the bulk of that expenditure is at Saworo, but we've trickled it down to Mojave, so this is the first year of having the start of that program at Mojave. There are staff members associated with it, as well as a, I believe there's a coordinator at the middle school level, or I'm sorry, at the high school level for that program. Dual-language immersion, we have that at multiple schools. We have the Spanish immersion program at Pueblo. Those kids move up to Mojave, so we've expanded that program to Mojave. We also have the Mandarin program at Desert Canyon Elementary and Desert Canyon Middle School. And within the board docs, you will also see, I think that's actually in the appendix as well, you'll see what those programs cost consist of, but also how many students participate in those programs the last couple of years. So we first looked at what are the different programs that we offer, then we started to take a look at what are some things that we do that other districts might not do. So for existence, we have RNs in our school, most of our schools, but that's not the case at every other school district. A lot of the other school districts will have health aides or health assistants instead of an RN. So the cost difference between what an RN costs and a health assistant is looking at that average, and if we were to change out RNs into health assistants. The same thing with library assistants. We have teacher librarians at our schools. Not all districts offer that at their schools. Some of them do just teacher or librarian assistants. And so again, this is looking at if we, the difference in price or cost between a certified librarian and a librarian assistant, what would that look like if we were to switch that over? Within the guidance counselors, we actually reduced our ratio for those a couple of years ago and made those levels lower. So this took a look at if we were to change that ratio back to what it previously had been, which is currently below the state average, is my understanding, Dr. Sakos, that if we were to make that option, that could save us again about $678,000. On the additional security, this is, we looked at, added an extra year for security so that we can pick up what changed after Uvalde. One of the things to keep in mind with security, we've done a lot of, we bought a lot of technology and some equipment, so that is why that number looks awfully high. But we have also added, we changed our security guards at our school sites from 10-month to 12-month positions, and we added additional security guards. So pre-Uvalde, we did not have a security guard at any of the elementary campuses. Right now, we have one that rotates within the learning community, so they're kind of split between multiple elementary campuses. The other thing that you'll see in the appendix is, when you talk about security, is right now, we have a grant that pays for SROs at a number of our schools, or, no, the SROs, but there's, SSOs, yes. That grant ends at the end of this year. So again, I mean, we can either choose to continue to do that, but we would be funding it through MNO at a cost, or know that that's something that would, unless something happens at the state level and there's a grant that comes through for it, that would impact security.
And while the mic's passing, I would just say that I was on the Superintendent of Public Instruction, Superintendent Advisory Committee today, and that is a big part of his budget ask, is to renew those grants, and so he's hopeful that the legislature will appropriate the funds. So while we can't, and he couldn't guarantee it, it is certainly the top priority for him.
Okay, so piggybacking on that, I was wondering why social workers weren't on this cost reduction consideration, considering we went, you know, two years ago, or '23, '24, we were paying for one at $78,000, and now this year, we're paying $681,000. So why did you not include them as a big area of cost reduction for us to look at?
We need more mics. A lot of that is funded through a grant, and some of what you'll even see within MNO right now, we have a couple of social workers who didn't have, or were working on the certification that they needed, they just needed to get that through ADE. We couldn't pay them for the grant until they got that done. That's happening, I think it actually already happened with the, I think there's like three or four that were in that case. So for this, they're showing in MNO, we have to pay for them right now out of MNO. They will be moving into that grant, we just had to get their certification through ADE. Honestly, not having it on here, it's later on in here, it's in the appendix, and we've showed it in the other, I just...
And I would add that the number that we were working with before some of these changes, 19 and a half covered by the grant. So it's not a cost reduction unless the board decides to keep the positions, then it's a cost increase of about $1.5 million to cover those positions that are covered by the grant. So it would be shown as a cost add if we maintain those positions. It's not, you know, the grant goes away, terminating contracts, you don't have the position, or if the board believes those are important positions, then we have to find the money to continue paying for those because the grant's gone.
And we do have a couple that are paid out of MNO from the school, so that would be a decision to make as to, you know, do we want to have just one that's paid through, I think we use dropout funds for it, it's a McKinney-Vento position, or do, what that looks like, but primarily because it's funded from a grant, and that grant will also end at the end of this year.
So I understand the cash account can still shoulder some of the structural deficit. That said, I think if I add all of this up, it's still less than $8 million, even with two schools. So can you help us understand, and you run the district, we don't, right? I don't think the board sits around and says, okay, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. We work off of your recommendation for what the, you know, cuts are that are consistent with what we're trying to accomplish as a district. So can you help us understand what to expect from these considerations to an ultimate recommendation on, you know, the least bad options when it comes to addressing our structural budget deficit? And then there are things, I apologize, that are not listed here, like spend less on software, or, you know, cut 10 more positions from the district office. How do we understand whether those are also being considered?
So the next slide gets to some of those, and not all of them, and we don't know the price on all of them. But the last bullet point is probably the one that shows where you can cover a chunk of the difference in this year, but to Shannon's earlier point, the more you spend of district additional assistance in MNO, you're kicking the can down the road two years from now when you've spent all of that money. So I would advise that we carefully look at and consider what the priorities are. I don't believe we should not fund the specialty programs. I've watched what's happened in our neighboring districts when they close their DLI programs. We've actually been the beneficiary of those, even though they're very expensive. The IB program is a calling card for many of our people. So I don't think that that's where you get the savings. I'm not recommending we eliminate RNs, but asking the question, when you rank order priorities, what are those positions, right? If we're going to prioritize the classroom, we have to then look at the teachers in the classroom and the people who are supporting the teachers, that I believe is the top priority, but then you have to support the ongoing operations of the district. And so it's ultimately a balancing act. We continue to look for where there's lower hanging fruit, but on that slide 33, it would take 160 software savings of $50,000 each to get to $8 million, and we don't have that kind of incremental savings. And so it's likely a combination of these things. We work hard to get to the number where we can, but all of this is before we talk about pay raises. And so just to put it in context, a 2% raise for our people is $3 million.
So the $8 million shortfall is assuming no pay raise?
It does not include a pay raise.
And it's an $11 million shortfall with a 2% pay raise?
If you're going to add a 2% pay raise. And that 2% is 0.8% below the cost of living adjustment that was just announced. So that's the other reason why, again, we talk about painful decisions, but doing ones that help move us forward. We do have some money in the DAA, but there would be heartburn if we spent it all in one year, because that means you're just, just like our cash accounts, it's the same thing, you don't have the same level of revenue every year because you're spending a big chunk of that carryforward.
So I apologize because you did speak to the calendar earlier, but when will you come to the board in the unenviable position of having to make recommendations, I'm sure in a different world, you would rather not make, or we would have made them? When do you adjudicate all these different options and give us what you think the optimal mix of least bad options is?
The first touch point will be the decision on December 9th, because the way the hearing is framed, and I did say this to the staff that I've spoken with, and I mean, with the Pima PTO or PTA, whichever they are, tomorrow night, that because they're under 300, I cannot recommend keeping them open in their current configuration. I don't think it's fiscally responsible, and after a 15-year history of declining enrollment, 6,000 kids, I can't make that recommendation. The board can make a different decision. And so all of that, I think, should be thoroughly adjudicated and vetted, so the first decision points December 9th, and that's a board decision. And I've telegraphed what my recommendation is, because I don't personally believe that there's a way forward that financially is doable with the realities we're looking at tonight. Then in January, Shannon presents kind of what we know from the state, it will probably be a briefer presentation because we're in close proximity here, but by March, we have to know through the IBN process what we can recommend to the governing board for pay increases, because contracts have to go out by March 15th to our certified staff. So between January and March is when we have to dial in on what these other adjustments are. My hope is between now and the end of the calendar year, we get clarity on what the board's priorities are, so that as the team's looking at, okay, where can we, you know, move some things, how can we, where, how and where can we make other reductions, while ensuring that we have full and thriving schools and that we're improving academic outcomes for kids, we need to know if social workers are untouchable, I have to find another 1.5 million. If, you know, so you just go through the list, and if nothing can get cut from the list, that puts us in a different kind of position, because something has to get cut to balance the budget. Or you spend all of your carryforward in one year and say, we'll fix it in '27, '28, and I don't know that that's possible without ending up in a position like districts that are in receivership because they've spent more in total than they have. So this is the window of opportunity, this year and next, and you can balance between the two, so there can be some give and take. But the first step in the process is deciding what to do on repurposing. The next step is in prioritizing these things. We're going to push hard. If we know that we can get savings by saying no, we say no to more vendors now, or we say, go find someone who's going to fund it because we can't. And when we can say no to software that no longer is providing a demonstrable benefit, we say no to that. So we're doing those things, but it's a combination of all of those that will make the difference to get us across the finish line. Like, we could increase class size ratios. If we did that by one through every level, that saves 1.5 million, that's money that could be put somewhere else. But that's also something you do in bargaining with the SEA.
I just wanted to say, I think our specialty programs are really important, and like I said, a big driver to our schools, so I hate to even, to go, hate to even go there. But I do want to just mention one thing that I had, I had pulled our positions from 2018 and our positions from this year, and we have 27 more specialists right now than we did in 2018. So I think we really need to look at positions, even though, like you said, it's painful no matter what we do, but we do have more positions than we had in 2018, even though we have a big decline in enrollment. So we just need to be really mindful of what hard decision we're going to make, but we do need to look at those numbers.
So when we're talking about the timing, the, that everything hinges on a decision on the 9th, December 9th.
on the 9th, December 9th. And the challenge I have with that timing is that I hear us talking and I'm assuming from previous years, and hopefully I'm not misrepresenting, that there's always been this kind of kicking the can or chasing. I use the analogy of the movie Twister where you look in your mirror and the tornado is behind you and you're driving and it's always there. And I don't want to be there next year and the year after and the year after. I look at the menu of options, whether it's schools, phase one, phase two, a menu of options. I want us to be ahead of this. And this is more of a positioning thing, right? Look what just came out with our state test scores. Like how many districts would kill to be Scottsdale right now? And I don't want us to be on the defensive of saying, "Ah, you know what, I got to close a school this year and, you know, maybe next year will get better and then I'll close a school that year." And so going back to the timing and the packaging of this, I would much rather us have the whole plan on the table, and this would be the 18th, to say, "Here are the pieces, here's the structuring," so that we can position this. And I'm not saying marketing's going to solve our problems, although there's a piece that I'll hit on, maybe on this slide. But we position this as, "Here is our plan, right? Here is Scottsdale for the future." If anyone's been involved with fundraising campaigns, I'm at ASU and we've got a new campaign, right? You have a goal and you have a message and you launch and everyone is working towards this and there's a vision. That's where I think we need to be. And so my request is that on the 18th, we have a more clear picture of the holistic plan. Not that it's said and done, right? It's the plan that you and your cabinet put on the table for us to bounce off of and give feedback on. But that way we see the whole thing. And so that, to me, is the timing that I'd like to see working.
And I think that's consistent with what I said at the beginning, and that is we really need to be taking a two-year look at this, even though this is setting the stage for preparing a budget for next year. It's really about, in the next two years, we set the tone for the next decade. And I think being strategic about that, and I believe we can bring a framing for how we do Scottsdale of the future, with the caveat that once we put anything out there, just like the conversation in phase one, it's going to bring a lot of different reactions, a lot of different thoughts, and a ton of different ideas, well, why not do this instead of that? So understanding that it will be the straw man that people react to, but it will at least be one that can paint a destination picture for what's possible with, because it's not no pain, but the least amount of pain in order to move us forward and to build on the positive momentum that we see like you just referenced.
So is that doable at the November 18th?
Yes, it's doable.
Okay. And then just on this slide, the last bullet, uncentralized enrollment. In kind of talking, there's been lots of conversations about marketing in the past and the previous boards were all about marketing enrollment and using that to solve the problem. I look at marketing, enrollment, and retention as a single function. You know, in my conversations with families, with principals, it's hard for me to hear principals talking about the marketing they do because that's not their thing. They're great principals, but they're not necessarily great marketers. And I think giving the long view on this, principals didn't have to be marketers. Your kids went to your local schools and they got them and they focused on being great principals. That's changed. I don't know if we've fairly said to our principals, "Hey, you have an additional job now, which is to be a marketer, and here's how we support you," or "You're on your own." And so the centralized enrollment to me is two things. One, having the focus on all three functions, marketing, enrollment, and retention, because those all go hand in hand. And two, preventing the sub-optimization. By that I mean somebody at elementary school X saying, "Hey, I'm, a family comes to me and I want them," or "Say no to them," or whatever it might be, without thinking of the whole district and saying, "Hey, I know, you know, we don't have room here, but, you know, we have this other school down the road." And again, no offense if that's done at schools, we understand why, that's their role, that's where they sit every day. But to reframe this as SUSD, and when you, and it's not even centralized, it's more federated, sort of at the community level and support from the district, that, to me, frames this as a much more us being on the offense of what we're doing as opposed to kind of being chased year to year.
So I think it's a really good point. We'll send a BEMO update on the marketing strategies that have been implemented over the past three to four years since Christine's been here. She's done boot camps for principals on that point of, "You weren't hired to be a marketer, you were hired to be an instructional leader, and this is part of the gig." And the district has gone down the road of centralized enrollment before, and there were pros and cons with that. We do think that there's a way to save money here, but we need to do some more work on what that restructuring looks like to provide the kind of customized support by learning community in all likelihood to ensure that we can make that happen. So I think you're hitting on another component that we can send information out to the board and include as part of that bigger picture of where we're going from here.
Lastly for me, go back on slide 32. The first thing, the average savings per school building closed, 1 million. When, will we see that on the 18th, the itemized breakdown on those savings? Or when will we see what that actually looks like? Because where did we get that number?
I thought I had included that in the program cost, but I might not have. So I can go back, I do have that. What it really comes down to is obviously office staff is part of that. It's also cutting back on utilities. We're still going to have to pay part of the utilities for a school, but cutting back part of the utilities, maybe only one FC at a campus versus two, we're not paying ADM to go in and clean as much, so there's some savings within that. The unknown part of it really comes down to the teaching staff. They're going to have, they're likely going to end up going somewhere following where the kids are at. And so there's a question about how much that really saves, but it really comes down to utility cleaning and, you know, office type stuff.
Will we be presenting that or will it be in writing?
Yeah, and I have it.
Will you repeat it?
Sure. The question was, will we be sending that out? I have that information, so I'm happy to send that to you.
Okay, and will we present it to the public?
Yep, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So this is somewhat what you almost answered. So what is the cost of mothballing a building? If we're really going to close it and with landscaping, with, you know, you've turned the lights up, you turn, what is that actual cost? Because I think the million dollars is probably a little high.
You think we'd save less than a million or save more than a million? We'd save, there's more, just run.
I mean, I would have to pull up the breakdown for those two specific ones. So when I looked at what are those savings, I took what were the actual expenses last year for, well, I took their staffing for this year, but then for the utilities and cleaning and whatnot, I took that based off of what their expenses were last year specifically for that school. Again, a lot of it comes down to, you know, what office staff are in there. I mean, obviously office staff doesn't add quite to a million dollars, so utilities plays a big role into it. Mothballing it, I mean, you wouldn't have your cleaning, but you're still going to have to mow the grass, you're still going to have to water it. Now, you're not going to use as much water, you're not going to use as much electricity by any sense. I think Dennis, you told me to project half of the utilities on that. So when we looked at that, we looked at a couple of different ways. We looked at if we just mothballed it and if we did have something on it. And so that's what we used, is that half savings on utilities.
So I'd also love to see that. And this wasn't what I would ask the mic for, but I think it's really important when we think about how much we're going to save, that we do it on a net basis, considering the fact that some number of families may choose to leave the district. And so we're not going to keep 100% of the revenue and then reduce the expenses. We're going to have less revenues, but then also have less expenses. So, but my question, kind of cheating a little bit, the rest of this is all expense stuff. So can you speak a little bit to revenues? Can you speak to, for example, what are the unutilized facilities that we could still be leasing? We could be generating more leasing revenue from. You know, one of our sites we use is a bus depot. Could that be generating more revenue? So can you talk a little bit about kind of a similar exercise that you've been doing to assess where there's more opportunity to generate revenue in addition to where there's opportunities to cut expenses? Yeah. Well, has that happened and?
To your first question, one of the things we have looked at is what was the decline that happened or the, you know, decline in ADM over the, you know, year over year for those two schools? And so we have that information. I think when you combine that in, yes, there is a little bit of a cost. The question becomes of how many students do we capture back? And hopefully we'd capture all of them, but I know that that's not reality. So we do have a breakdown of what that looks like, if it was 5%, 10% or more than that. So we do have that, but I think part of it too is that the percentage that they're losing anyways year over year, I think we have to factor that into it as well.
And we talked to, I did, I talked to the former superintendent and board president at the time in Paradise Valley, as well as the superintendent of Cave Creek. Just to get a sense, Cave Creek closed two schools, Paradise Valley closed three. They both said they lost maybe 50 students above and beyond their normal decline when you take that into account. So in both instances, they said it wasn't a mass exodus, it was a little bit more than what they had been declining over time. So I think it was helpful to know just from proximity perspective, that's what our neighbors experienced.
Yep. On your other question, yes, we have, I mean, I don't think you can say, "Hey, we need to look at our footprint within our schools and not do the same within our own district properties that aren't school campuses." I think we have to look at both of those things. We have looked at that. One of the things we've looked at is, you know, could we unload Main Street Office and move people over into this campus? We've also looked at our Oak Campus and what options are there. Depending on what happens, there's some things, some steps that have to happen to be able to close or, you know, mothball those or sell those locations. There is some costs that's associated with also moving some of the food service stuff out of Oak. But there's cost savings that would happen if we didn't continue to, you know, keep the Oak Campus running. We have several renters on Archoia Campus. We just lost one of them. But we've gotten several. So I think, I know before that was fairly full until just recently at Archoia Campus with the Miracle League and the State of Scottsdale. And Stars, yep.
And the Noah Clinic was in there for a while and then they moved out. And there are others that approach us over time with interest in leasing space. I sent an update by one of those in my last weekly updated conversation we had. There are potential opportunities. Several years ago, I tried to get EBIT to set a Healthox program up at the Choya Campus because of its location between Honor Health and Mayo. And I'm like, "This is a perfect place." And it was more than they wanted to invest at the time, but EBIT has shown a willingness to say, you know, "We might want to think about locating central campus programs out in local districts." And so the fire science is the first program in our district. But if you think about where the Oak Campus is now, across the street from Coronado, that might be an optimal place to renovate and find a partner like EBIT or Higher Ed. So we're open to all of those things. Part of the domino effect is knowing what's going to be available and where we're skating to, to the point of, you know, what's the district of the future? We need to know what those opportunities are. A Choya facility, as Dennis will remind me, I mean, it's an older facility and it took work to even get it ready for the last person that came in or the last company. Apache, the same way, very old, the two-story building probably needs to be torn down. But we've actually had multiple conversations with different developers and the IDA for the city of Scottsdale to say, "Could we convert part of that parcel to be workforce housing? You know, are there creative strategies to benefit our employees on some of the district-owned assets?" The 68th and Oak Street project is a potential revenue generator for the rentals at that location, but it's also an investment in a neighborhood where they were worried we were going to sell it to someone else and it would become something that they didn't really want. So, you know, we have been looking at those options and strategically vetting what fits within the facility rubric that the board adopted.
I would also add that the revenue that comes in for those long-term leases is not something that goes into Civic Center. If it's a longer-term lease, that has to go what's in called plant fund and can then only be used for capital expenses. Now, that means more money in that account, we could use more of the capital account, so there's a little bit of fluctuating around in there, but...
Yeah, I don't get to say I'm new for much longer, but I am, I will admit, I don't fully appreciate how many non-school sites we as a district own, what that list looks like. Is it 10, 20 above the 30, 5 above the 30? And then, I don't want an answer now, just to be efficient, but this would be a follow-up question and to understand for them which of them are generating revenue through leasing of some form and which of them are not for whatever reason, just so I kind of understand the total opportunity.
So with Apache, I think we only have one renter there now, 27,000 a year. It is prime real estate and there are options for that. We could sell it, we could do a ground lease. And I'd really like to look at these facilities where we don't have students and staffs who have, you have Choya, and I know that it has several renters, but I don't know if it's actually producing an income versus what the expenses are, and I'd like to see that. There's Oak and there's a lot of staff in there, but can that staff be moved out and that property, they're sold or do a ground lease? Ground leases are generally more lucrative than just leasing the space. And even with 68th and Oak, I just think it's important that we are looking at what revenue can be generated from these facilities that are not being used so that we can protect the facilities that are being used that we have students and staff in.
We will do the work to gather that information, kind of paint the picture, talk about the options. You know, if you're going to sale a property, then there's legislation that requires us to go to a vote of the people. Many districts have done that. If it's a straight-up sale and it's approved by the voters, you cannot discriminate against who buys the property. So you could be inviting competition into that sale. So there are a lot of things to consider, but I believe that it's important for us to look at all of the district assets and make the best decisions we can and understand what the limitations are on the use of any proceeds in that way, but also think about, you know, where we're going to from here and what makes the most sense.
I would just add that in that analysis, that I appreciate being brought up by Ms. Warner, that we look at the distinction between the lease, the gains from a lease versus the gains from a sale.
So just looking at other, oh, are we skipping? Okay. Other cost reductions, like I said, we don't have pricing on all of these, but we are looking at what a retirement incentive could look like, the insurance.
Can I just interject there? Almost in every case that I'm familiar with, when you're looking at reducing the number of buildings you have and you're thinking about how you address the issue of the staff concerns, where am I going to be next year? Oftentimes, not all the time, but oftentimes, a retirement incentive is included to say, "Okay, there are people who are maybe one or two years away from moving into retirement." And if you sweeten the pot, it may create vacancies so that you can, through attrition, maintain the staff versus having to do a reduction in force. So it's a way to potentially get to a win-win for the organization. And so that's why it's on the table. We don't know what the structure would look like. We're not the only districts that have and are considering it in the state of Arizona, and it's a common thing to do when you're reducing your footprint.
We also have the insurance RFP that closed on October 15th. USI is the company that we hired to help look through that, those responses and put it into a more layman's term for us to be able to review. So they are doing that right now. We hope to have the association team people together the first part of November, which is honestly next week, to start looking at that and have a recommendation to the governing board in December. So hopefully there will be some savings there. We're looking at cell phones and hotspots. We're looking at how those are used, who they're giving out to, our policies and procedures on that. And we think that there's about $100,000 savings within that and tightening that up. And then again, standalone printers. It's really convenient to have a printer in your classroom or nearby, but having all those extra printers versus using the network system, which is going to require some steps, but it could save us at least $100,000 because those toners and the maintenance on those are pretty high. Again, we're still looking through all the software. You know, software is not going to get us to $8 million savings, but we want to be good stewards of our dollars. And so we're looking at what are the redundancies and where can we cut some of that back? And then again, we've talked about centralized enrollment. And then again, we've talked about centralized enrollment. This really goes forward to if, you know, beyond the things that we need to do to reduce our expenses, the cost of a 1% salary increase is about $1.5 million. I think we've talked about the other two bullets quite a bit, so I'm going to move on. And really, this just kind of summarizes everything we've talked about today or this evening. We know that enrollment has dropped by 6,000 students. We still operate nearly the same amount of schools, and the cash balances or reserves that we've had are declining. They're no longer sustainable for what we've been doing. We've already put in $4.7 million in reductions and efficiencies, trying to keep that as far away from the classroom as possible, but that's where the bulk of our dollars are spent. We still have a deficit, and so really, how do we address those issues with the resources that we have and align them so that we? I know I hate having this conversation every single year of we need to cut, we need to cut. I would love to come to one of these meetings one day and say, we don't have to cut. So again, how do we get through the road ahead so that we can get ahead of where we are and hopefully have discussions on how we can utilize those dollars in a way that's not always cutting? So with that, there are a lot of other slides beyond this that break down cost into more specific detail. So I'm just going to open it up if there's specific ones that you want to take a look at or specific slides that you want to take a look at.
Slide 46, please. At the bottom, Scottsdale Online Learning. I'm just, would like to know why that has not been in consideration, showing that we have a million-dollar loss right now. Why has that not been something we're talking about cutting?
So Seoul is a difficult one to look at in that, when we look at the ADM, so this really took, what is the ADM that that specific school generates? Looking at this, this is just what they generate for kids who are registered and in Seoul. But we know that there are over 2,000, I think the number I got was 2,800 students last year within our brick-and-mortar classes or schools that took online learning classes. That doesn't get picked up as revenue for Seoul because they're at Chaparral or Arcadia or Soro. Their student, that revenue for that student is at that school, but they still took an e-learning class. And so there's an expense for having that teacher that is coded to Seoul. When you take a look at how many students do that, and if a student takes just one class that, so say they're with us all day, but they decide to take one PE class on, you know, ASU Prep or one of the other online sources out there, that reduces their FTE for us to 0.75. So even though we've had them all day and we've taught them all day, if they take one of those classes online with another school, then that reduces our FTE, that reduces, which equates to ADM. So looking at how many, and I just use the number of 2,000, looking at that with a number of kids who took online classes, if we weren't capturing all of their enrollment, that right there is $3.3 million based off of how many kids took e-learning classes last year. One of the things that Simar pulled for me is we actually do lose some enrollment because kids do take classes, online classes at other programs. So for last year, looking at the enrollment that we lost in our ADM because of that was actually 76, 77 ADM. That's about $350,000 that we lost because students took classes online and another online option. So while it looks like they are losing, when you look at straight, we only get X amount of dollars for kids who are specifically enrolled in Seoul or maybe started with brick-and-mortar and then just switched to Seoul the last semester. It's not exactly an apples-to-apples when it comes to that program. And so that's not, that's why we haven't said, hey, that's a program we need to look at a cutting. Now, could there be some savings that we do within that program? One of the things we did for this year is we combined the principal with the director of community education. There's other savings we probably could look at to see if there's other ways to save within it, but it's hard to say these are the true revenue and the true expenses because a lot of the revenue is actually earmarked at the high schools, but the expense is sitting with the teachers who are coded to Scottsdale Online Learning, if that makes sense.
When did we start Seoul? What did we do before?
Early 2000s?
The question is, is when did we start Seoul? I'm at least going back to when Dr. Peterson was here, so going back to 2014-ish, 2013, But I will have to verify my very rusty memory.
And Dr. Sakos would tell you that she and I have had many a discussion on, are we making money or are we losing money with this program? Because it is hard to tell.
You touched on this earlier, but I'm going to ask you to walk us through the process here on the fund balance. This is from the AFR. The funding, the ending fund balance for 2024 was $29,928,667. Then, when 2025 was sent, the prior year-ending fund balance was $5,447,230, a variance of $24 million. Then, the 2026 estimated year-end of 2025 was $24,208,777, and that was as of July 5th. And on the 2025 AFR, ending fund balance that was submitted on October 8th was negative $5,035,858, which is a variance of $29,244. So if you could just walk us through what happened there, what the process was? That would be very helpful.
So that really relates back to the question earlier about quasi-mire and how it affects our cash balances. We have a budgetary formula for MNO and for capital that says this is what the state will fund you for. However, you have to also tax for the cash to be able to cover what that budgetary expense is. The quasi-mire lawsuit came in at just over $24 million. I don't know, it was about 20, a little over $24 million, which took away from our cash. So when you talk about the ending cash balance, I said, I think you said one of them was a $24 million difference. Quasi-mire, $24 million-ish dollars. That is why our cash balance is now negative $5 million. And what you have to factor into there as well is that when you look at our carry-forward, so our carry-forward being what, nine, a little over $9 million, close to $10 million? Your carry-forward should actually equate to what your cash balance is. If there's a difference, it means that your cash balance is actually below where your budgeted expenses could actually come up to. That all goes back to quasi-mire. We did not tax for quasi-mire, the amount that was taken back from us from the county. We did not do that in the prior year. We put in, we want to phase that over the next couple of years so it wasn't such a huge impact to our taxpayers. So we factored in a little over $5 million for this year, but that is why you will see a negative $5 million cash balance on our MNO is because even though we have the budget capacity to be able to do things, our cash balance is lower than what our budget capacity is because of quasi-mire.
So we issued TANs on that. So where does the TANs fall into this?
TANs was just a, to get you the cash that you might need so you don't run below in it. So it's really just a loan. That took place last year. We did $5 million last year, I believe it was $5 million, $5 million on the TANs. We took that out at the beginning of the year. We know that the money starts rolling in when people start paying their taxes in October. What we didn't know is how fast was the county going to take out? Was the $24 million going to come out right away or was it going to take time? So that $5 million TANs was to basically ensure that we had enough cash in our accounts to cover the checks or warrants that the county was issuing. We did that $5 million TANs, and we sold that back in November so that we didn't continue to accumulate interest charges on it.
So, and just to, for people who may not remember what the quasi-mire lawsuit was, this related to the county assessor's office classifying properties in a way that the courts deemed was not appropriate. And so many, many parcels were overtaxed for a period of time. And while the case was being litigated, it continued to be taxed at a wrong rate. By the time the final determination was made, the taxing entities that had been the beneficiary of those revenues, which the county sets for us, we didn't do that. It wasn't a decision within Scottsdale Unified. We're told that they were going to have money clawed back by the county to pay the judgment from the courts. But all of this relates to decisions that were made by the county assessor's office, not by Scottsdale Unified School District, which is why we were scrambling to find a way to deal with. We were the largest school district impacted by the quasi-mire lawsuit.
On slide 63 with guidance counselors, the implication is if we increase the ratios, there's a savings because we won't have as many headcount to cover the students. Why is it so much higher for middle school?
I'm going to let Dr. Sakos answer that question.
So in 2020, the ratios were just that for middle school was 550 to 1 and high school was 450 to 1?
Why is the saving so much, not the ratios? Why is the saving so much more for middle school if we change, are there that many more counselors at the middle school?
I'm going to let Shannon talk about her calculation. I'm sorry. Well, part of it, I think, is, keep in mind, this is an estimate of Shannon saying, if we change this ratio, the FTE would be, say, 2.1 at a school. And me going, well, I guess we'd probably bump that up to 2.5. So that's part of it. Part of it, too, we need to reconfirm, we realized this morning that we had high schools at 450 and middle schools at 550, but it really comes down, so there might be a little bit of difference between those two, but it really comes down to looking at one, how many, how many are we doing? I think there's pretty big savings. I don't have it right in front of me, but, the detail right in front of me, but, I mean, when you look at like Echo Canyon and some of our middle schools that are pretty low count in the number of FTE that they have. So we can look into that a little bit more, but that's, there's a couple of factors into that.
The general number that there's, whatever that is, seven times the savings. We don't have seven times as many middle schools as high schools.
Yeah. And can you share, I'm not sure what the current ratio is right now, but I think that also feeds into it.
The current ratio is 375 to 1 for both middle school and high school, and that happened around 2020-ish. And so, yes, prior to that, it was high schools 450 to 1 and middle schools 550 to 1.
So what I would say is we want to look into this a little bit more.
While I have the microphone, I want to correct myself. And Seoul began during the 2011-2012 school year. Thank you to my peers around the table that did some quick searches to correct me. Thank you.
Just a procedural question to follow up and wrap up what I was asking about the fund balance. Is it typical or was there a specific reason of why there was another submission on the AFR on October 8th? So the original one was done on July 5th, and then there was another one done on October 8th?
There, the AFR doesn't get completed until the first part of October. So the July 5th, that wouldn't, I was, I'm wondering if that was the general budget, which happens around that time? It should have been a little bit earlier than July 5th, though. So without seeing what you're looking at, I don't know the exact answer, but July is typically when the budget, or end of June is typically the budget submission, and then October is the AFR.
Well, I just, I don't have any questions. Does anybody else have any more questions? Dr. Potanski?
Yeah, it's partly a question. It's more of a general comment. I mean, first, let me say, I
Let's let everybody do that.
Bounced between anger and resignation that I lost the musical chairs contest and joined the board when the reckoning finally happens with a loss of 6,000 enrollments and no change in our footprint. And so without thought about whether it's one school or five schools, whether it's sorted by how recently the campus was built versus how families have moved, you know, that simple math of the loss of 6,000 enrollments and no prior decisions over the course of that enrollment decline to reduce our footprint and focus on serving the needs of the many, so to speak. You know, it makes me angry, it makes me very frustrated, but we are where we are. So that's sort of comment number one. Comment number two is reasonable people can disagree about how much to associate where we are with the three major drivers, but I think there are clearly three major drivers, one of which is a story as old as time of a once-growing district, aging, becoming more expensive, having fewer school-age families, and where people live in the district changing within the district. And so it is part of the Lion King cycle of life that unfortunately, when that happens, you have these difficult decisions. A second part of it, I think, very clearly is a state policy that shifted from how to invest in public schools to how to give parents choices. And those are just two different philosophies. But they are, if you're the public school, a policy choice when you already add to the fact that we are relatively underfunded and there's no extra money that says, hey, if you start getting competitive signals, here's an investment amount that you can start to use to do marketing and to do, because I remember when board members criticized us spending money on marketing as, you know, potentially a waste of resources. There's no extra funding that allows us to compete in the market the way my company, if we started to lose sales, could raise capital or borrow money or do other things like that to try to turn it around. And then a third is clearly the district. I mean, I'm never going to say that the district couldn't do things better, market better, have a better mix of programs, lease more, and so on. So that, you know, reasonable people can disagree on how we distribute, but that's kind of where we are. The piece that I haven't seen here as much, and I, you always ask us to send this in advance, so I regret that I'm throwing this on you, but it's definitely the piece that's been kind of developing in my mind in a good way. I didn't come in thinking about this way. And I'm trying to think of a non-technical jargon way to talk about it, but if you like, this isn't exactly how it happened, but once upon a time, Amazon ran all these data services for the sole purposes of Amazon, right? And then they figured out, wait a minute, we could be like a platform to others. We could like rent out these data centers to others who would love to have all the amazing security and scalability of everything it takes to run Amazon. And now it turns out that almost all of the profit of Amazon comes from that, not actually from being an e-commerce store. And that's the idea of organizations becoming platforms. And I guess the thought that I would leave us with is I think the public school district of the future in Arizona has to develop the muscle of being a really good platform, of saying, how do we use all of these facilities we have to generate the maximum amount of revenue? How do we use the online programs that we've created for our students to capture some of the $7,000 or $8,000 of, you know, voucher funds that are out there? I don't personally agree with this, but does participation in our sports allow us to capture some of that $7,000? You know, are there other ways, if this is the new normal and if every family has $7,000 who's not in our schools, what are the ways that we can capture some of that $7,000? Offer value to those families and move from a world where it's all or nothing? We get none of the lost student? We get all of the lost student? Do we get degrees of the lost student? As well as the other ways in which we can be? Are there central services like? Are there central services, like human resources, that smaller schools that we compete against would pay us to be their payroll processor? You know, because it's so expensive at their small scale, but at our scale, we can do it more efficiently. I'm guessing when we go through all of this, just like the weird order of operations, you sell a building, you can't use any of the money for how you want to use it. You know, that the answer will be no, that there's like a million reasons in which the weird world of policy and politics constrains us to be that entrepreneurial. But that's why I kept coming back to revenues, is I do think, not because I'm thinking hope is a strategy, and if we just grew our way out of this, you know, because the order of magnitude of any of the growth strategies are still much less than the structural deficit. But I do think, you know, just a simple question, who at the district is responsible for growing revenues from auxiliary services? However you define that, is increasingly a muscle that we need to be able to, to build and execute as part of, you know, the broader vision that Mike was talking about earlier.
Well, and, and I think there is merit to what you're saying, and there will be constraints. And, and there are a couple ways to think about it. So, when Ms. Carney talked about our Level D conversation, bringing private placement special ed services back into the district, Lee and her team have done the modeling from a financial perspective. And so, instead of sending 2.3-plus million out, we're going to spend a fraction of that bringing it in. And so, it's, it's, it's a service not only that meets the needs of our kids, but also could draw in from other areas. So, so the notion of the district as a platform, there are a lot of moving parts to consider, but I think it absolutely has to be on the table. And I don't think there's a singular person on the revenue side. I think you have multiple people, because community ed is one engine when you think about early childhood, and how do you meet the needs of young families in our community? That could be a pathway. But, from a system of public education perspective, there are things that we would want to advocate for in policy changes that make what you're talking about more doable. And we do have someone here who has influence on state policy.
Thank you. Piggybacking on that, is it possible, or why are we not talking about just adding, you know, early learning to Echo Canyon? Keep existing and then adding early learning to what is already existing? Why are we not talking about that?
So, so that actually, from an Echo Canyon perspective, in, in my mind, that should continue and expand. So we talked toddler, preschool, and pre-K, or whichever order, Dr. Bono, I'm supposed to say those in? Yeah, so that you have all groups, and you could be more robust. So Hopey has no room for preschool, so you can really centralize that at Echo Canyon. You could conceivably, not that we're recommending it, if Tavon grew, you could bring all of the Arcadia Learning Community, early learning, onto that Echo campus. And then, depending on if enrollment trends shifted or changed, you have a campus you could do more with. So, our thinking on the move people out of Oak and into Echo was to say, that's a non-MNO cost center. Community ed can pay for the operating cost of that building out of the revenue they generate, because early learning is non-MNO, community ed's not MNO. That means you've taken Echo Canyon completely off the, the MNO budget, and that frees up real dollars. But it doesn't foreclose future opportunities, and so the anchor could still be the early learning programs. That's how we've been talking about it.
No, but I'm saying, why can't we just add to the existing program there?
So the, the cost of maintaining the K8 structure with all of the courses that you have, and the electives that you have to have, that's what's cost prohibitive. So that's why we're saying, when, when you fall as a K8 below 300, that's not an efficient operational structure. Kids don't get the level of opportunities that they would otherwise get if you're in a full and thriving school like Ingleside Middle School. And so, that's, that's the challenge. If you're a K8 that's got an enrollment like Cheyenne, where you have 950 kids, different suite of options available to the kids, it's also a different delivery model. And so, that's part of the, the economic reality that led to where we've begun the conversation on Echo Canyon. But I do think that there's something there on the preschool front that can, can be a building block for the future.
Right. I'm looking, is there a way that we can just add to the existing program and can combine without having to displace those families? Piggybacking on Board Member Potanski, though, I'm interested in if you all have been looking at what Mesa's doing. Mesa's doing exactly what you're talking about. I've been looking into their small school model. I think that's something that we could be looking at. You know, they're in the same situation as we are, but they're not closing schools. They are creating a small school model that I think we should be looking into. They are also offering à la carte ESA programming. And I just am wondering, have you looked into that?
So we had some of those conversations, I appreciate that. I've talked with their former superintendent and their current superintendent. One of the things about the small school model was, they had to reconfigure staffing expectations. So, shared administrators, shared nurses, shared teaching staff. So the trade-off was, you didn't have the same guarantee of the level of support at each building, so that you could keep those buildings open. And you have to do a lot of those shared services in order to be able to keep the smaller schools open. Quite frankly, the signal we got from this board is that any school that's open has a minimum of a principal and assistant principal. We haven't had any conversations about sharing RNs, or sharing other staff positions. We had internal discussions about it, but there's never been a signal from the board or the community that changing the expectation at our buildings in order to keep a building open was the preferred approach. If the board wants that to be the approach, we could certainly look at it, but that would be a substantial change across not just these two schools. It would have to take place over Phase 1 and Phase 2 schools in order for it to hit the economic target that Mesa's looking at.
Yeah, well, I don't think we know something's an option until it's brought, brought forward to us. So I think it's something to look at, because they are being innovative, and they're ahead of us. And, just wanted to know. Okay, last thing I'm going to touch on, and I'm not sure what, I kind of lost track of what slide, but going to Class Site Fund. Okay, so it looks like we're underspending our annual allocation there. And I'm wondering, can we shift any of that money to, to pay for, you know, teacher-based salaries?
So, yes, the Classroom Site Fund has increased its balance. We can't move that money to MNO. There is also a supplanting clause within it, so we have to be careful. What you can't do is say, we're going to give, you know, a 1% increase to classified, and we're going to pay for that out of MNO, but Classroom Site Fund's going to pay for that 1% increase for teachers. One of the things I think we can and should look at is we, you can do additional compensation, which we do at a Classroom Site Fund. We offer, we've got that tiered system that we do for our teachers based on longevity. I think we need to, and we can look at increasing that, or maybe changing some of the parameters within that as a way to bring down or utilize dollars that are in that Classroom Site Fund. So definitely, there are some things that we, we've already identified as, yes, there's some opportunity there for our teachers.
Is this still on? Yeah. Okay, could you, could the board get that information of what we have been spending that, those funds on? And what you see us being able to shift, I mean, those cash positions? Can any of that get paid out of this? Like, okay, so if you could just let us know what we can use that money for, and what we have been using it on? Thank you.
So, two things. One, I've met with lots of families and community members in the last few weeks. And, one thing I say is, we talk about things like chess pieces, and we're going to move this and change that, and it could be very impersonal. And, I just want to reassure that, I personally, and I'm sure my colleagues here as well, understand, like, these are human decisions, these are families, these are kids, these are their schools. And so, I hope we can live in both spaces where we can talk about these things like we're moving pieces around on a board, because we have a dollar to hit and, and issues to overcome, while still understanding these are our kids. And so, I just want to put that out there, and hopefully speaking for all of my colleagues entirely at this table, that we realize that, I don't want families to forget that. Second, with, you know, the comment about options, I'm very much in the same boat. And, I know what I've been doing is getting the data, looking at trends, and then having conversations. I have my monthly one-on-ones with Dr. Menzel, I've met with him multiple times over the last few weeks, and with Shannon as well. So, when it comes to those options, I hope those options come out in those one-on-one conversations. I find those a very rich place. So, I'm not as much sitting here waiting for someone to bring me options. I'm more trying to see what I think is out there, and vetting those with the different people, which I think is a more proactive way to do this. So, happy to have that channel and communication. You know, on the communication, I'll admit, I didn't know planning about Echo. I have a coworker at ASU, and he's an Echo parent, and he messaged me one day, and he's like, hey, we just got messaging that they're going to close our school. I'm like, I didn't know that, let's have a quick conversation. So, agree that, you know, the, I wasn't looped in on the communications, per se, but that wasn't a shock to me. From conversations we've had, from looking at the map and where things are, that's absolutely something that is within the realm of possibility, and then we can meet. So very happy that we have that opportunity to talk, and I think that helps in kind of fleshing out different options as we move forward. So thank you.
Any other final comments from the governing board? I, I would just, as we bring close to this study session and this special meeting, that I, I just want to thank the staff for the amazing thoughtful preparation for today. This was a lot of work of culminating and synthesizing all that we've asked from you in preparation over the series of meetings we've had, a series of conversations that we've had to, you know, bear the burden of, of this data as we process what it may or may not turn into. I really appreciated the governing board's creative approaches for considerations, the, the topics and alternative ideas that were brought forward. What a healthy conversation and productive dialogue we've had as a group. You know, with the awareness of the awkward and imperfect communication that any and all of us have experienced in any parts of our lives. I, I keep hoping for grace as the community echoes what we've all shared about our value, about our kids and our families. The, the depth of today's conversation makes me very, very proud to be a part of a board that is facing a cliff, and I'm sorry that it's now. And I really appreciate the, the hard, hard work we have ahead. So with that, I'm going to ask that we, do I just close it, or I vote? I make a motion that we, that we move into executive session for these two reasons. The governing board may recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 38431-dash, or excuse me, dot O3A and 5, for the purpose of discussing or consultations with designated representatives of the public body in order to consider its position and instruct its representatives regarding negotiations with employee organizations regarding additional input, regarding parameters, and board priorities during interest-based negotiations. And B, the governing board may recess into executive session for the purpose of obtaining legal advice from the attorney for the public body pursuant to ARS 38431 dot O3A3 regarding ongoing investigation regarding technology resources. I need a second?
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor? Aye. The motion carries, we will move to another room for executive session. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We will resume upon conclusion of our executive session. I make a motion to recon, to adjourn the executive session, I need a second? All those in favor? Okay, the motion passes 5-0. We are reconvening our special session, and I am now, help me here, let's see.
We have a motion to, to provide direction to the attorney.
Okay, that's right.
Madam President, you need a motion to provide direction to the attorney for the public body as discussed in the first portion of the executive session 5A.
So moved, I need a second? All those in favor? Passes 5-0. I move to adjourn? I take a motion, I motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.